I'll call to order the Tuesday, June 28, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Whole, meeting to order at 6:34. All councilors are present with the exception of Counselor Parker, who is representing us at a TVCCA meeting. Calendar Communications Counselor Casiri.
Sorry. Good evening. On June 17, I attended the Juneteenth event held at the Town Hall. I just wanted to thank the DEI Committee, HR Director Anisha Green, Sean Greeley, Jerry Locken, and the other members of our town staff and our town residents for coming out to attend this important event. The DEI Committee handed out books so that residents could continue their education on Juneteenth. Mayor Melendez read the proclamation from the Town Council, and we were privileged to witness a beautiful song. This afternoon, I was honored to be asked to speak to Scouts PAC 200, the Weeby Loes. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. The PAC had a requirement to meet with a government or community leader about their role in the community, so thank you to PAC 200 for your attention, your excellent questions, and for inviting me to explain what the Groton Town Council does in our community. I got asked about some of the feelings that we have during Town Council meetings, which was a great question. I explained that we have a wide spectrum of feelings during our council meetings. I also received various communications regarding Branford Manor, the Mystic Oral School, the Affordable Housing Plan, GOT Space, and tax abatements for retirees. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Good evening. Thank you. I don't have a lot of communications. The main thing is the Property Reuse Committee meetings with Counselor Bordalon and Counselor Westervelt. We've held, I believe, three meetings so far. They've been very informative, lots of participation from residents. We received a lot of comments from residents as well. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, I believe. They are the first and third Wednesday of every month, and we are starting to dig in and review those documents and look forward for, you know, opening, open, transparent communication from the residents. I also attended the Economic Development Commission meeting a few weeks ago, and that was a really robust meeting. For those who have not seen it, I would encourage you to watch it. It was a very, very good discussion on economic development, and I've been with the EDC for several years, and I thought it was the best meeting that they've had in terms of transparency, communication, looking for an overall plan of economic development. I also attended the Groton Long Point Budget Meeting several weeks ago, where there were some questions on the bridge project and other matters with police and the highways, but everything was uneventful at that meeting. And a few weeks ago, I had attended the Pension and Employment Committee meeting, which I would imagine Chair Baumgartner may have some information to relay on that meeting, so I'll defer to him. So, that's all. Thank you.
Counselor Westervelt?
Thank you. I was honored yesterday to be able to attend the day one swearing-in ceremony for the class of 2026 at the Coast Guard Academy. Thank you very much for allowing me to do that. It was a very exciting time and a large class, one of the largest ones they've sat in a while, 303 new cadets, as well as a 44% female ratio, which is the highest that they've ever had. So it shows an extreme move forward for the Coast Guard, and that was, that was a lot of fun to do that. Additionally, I'd like to publicly thank John Goodrich for his dogged pursuit of efforts with the State Historic Preservation Office at getting the Mystic Oral School site looked at as far as a archaeologically, an archaeological historical site, which is, I think, a very positive move. There's some history up there, the state believes that, and having that, I think, is very positive for Town of Groton. Thank you.
Counselor Bordalon?
Thank you. First off, I just want to say if I sound a little off, I did just have surgery yesterday. I have partial thyroid removed, and I'm basically barely one day post-op, but I'm here. So I do apologize if I sound a little hoarse or my projection is off. First, I did receive the same communications that were already addressed by Counselor Casiri. I also attended the Property Reuse Committee, as stated, by Counselor McBride. I want to thank Counselor McBride for his, you know, very diligent work with the process of our committee. It runs very smoothly, effectively, and everyone on there has a voice, and I just want to thank him for that, along with Counselor Westervelt. I also attended, this Sunday, the Branford Manor had a gathering of folks, I believe some folks from the city attended, along with Counselor Baumgartner. A lot of concerns going on there. What I felt, I spoke on behalf of myself. Recently, it was also stated at that meeting that the HUD gave Branford a, they passed Branford. It seems as if only about 20 units were actually inspected out of over 400 units, and these were handpicked and selected. So, very concerned for the wealth and well-being of the residents in and around Branford Manor still currently that are suffering with the mold conditions, the, definitely the disparities in what should be done. And they also, too, are concerned that there is a contract that the town and the city are doing in abating taxes, and yet we haven't been doing inspections since the start of that tax abatement in 2017. They have started to form a committee, and they are working towards advocating for themselves. So again, I encourage the town, Town Manager, and it, it's, to do their due diligence from the outside of those buildings. It doesn't take an inspector to go inside to see. I also did, I know this past Sunday, I was not able to attend due to my surgery coming up, and Mrs. Foley was having people down to discuss one of the agenda items that are on the agenda today. I did meet with her the Sunday prior. I went down, looked around, took some pictures, and saw, you know, the changes in the tapestry of that road. You know, growing up on High Street myself and Mystic, you know, there's definitely, definitely some changes down there, and I think, you know, her concerns, you know, are not just subject to that one road. It could be seen elsewhere. I, I did receive emails from about Branford Mystic Oral School, as stated, and I think those are the only communications I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I too went to the Juneteenth, flag raising and celebration. Just want to say that I was honored to attend. I think it's great that Groton has a new holiday and new tradition. Just want to thank the DEI Committee again for putting that event on, particularly our HR Director, Green, who did a lot of the legwork on that event. That's all I have. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you. I certainly like to align my remarks with Counselor Bordalon. I too attended the meeting this amongst the Branford Manor Residents or Tenants Union on Sunday. Healthy exchange of information, and a lot of residents did inquire as to what the council's next steps were. Obviously, we did meet to discuss the issue in executive session, but since then, we, as a council, have not publicly kind of declared either a position or kind of stated what next, what best, our next best steps are, and I think it would behoove our council to state emphatically what those next steps are, so residents no longer have to wait. So additionally, this past Friday, attended Little League, Little League, Groton Little League is hosting their tournament, and was privileged to work the concession stand with Chris Conley, which was a lot of fun. So thank you, Counselor Franco, for the invitation to do that. And also have received no shortage of communications from the short-term rental group. I've made a referral to put this issue on the agenda. I know we've discussed it in the past, but considering now we're starting to enter the thick of summer, I really do believe we need to consider an ordinance and get on the same page with our Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to, you know, the regulations that they'll be exploring and kind of codifying those regulations or making our own set of additional regulations for, in terms of an ordinance. And so I'm supportive of doing that, and I hope we can push to make that item a, an agenda item in the near future, and I think that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received various emails from different constituents. Worked with the Food Bank this past Friday, sponsored by City of Groton, United Way, and St. John's, so this has become a nice monthly thing that I do. June 16, we had the Trails Pass Course Meeting, Director Barry, and noted, this is a fairly light meeting, but we had noted the successful Connecticut Trails Day celebrations at Avalonia and Groton, both of them hosted, so it went very, very well. An interesting thing that came out was about the beech trees. We have a lot of beech trees around here, but the beech trees and the copper beech seem to have some kind of disease on them that's still coming up from New Jersey and has worked its way up the list there. So, it was kind of news to us, we just like to see leaves curling in beech trees, there's something going on with that. I attended the June 19, so the Juneteenth celebration at the City of Groton Municipal Building. A big thank you to Counselor Parker for organizing that and putting that on. It was an excellent event, nicely attended. And on the fun side, I performed at the Make Music Day, it's an international music day that goes on June 21, and a ukulele band was put together about eight people, and we performed at Mystic Mike Library. We got nicely proud, and it was a lot of fun to participate in that. Events were held all, all of the surrounding areas, a lot of the greenery, and this was a wonderful event. So, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I also received many communications from residents on various matters. I took a ride along with our Town of Groton Police Officer Brower. It was very educational, good conversation about things going on in our community. Received a thank you card from GASP, Carolyn Wilson. It was very nice. Also volunteered at Groton Little League on numerous occasions in their concession stands, as well as happy to have many elected officials that have been signing up to help them during their All-Stars and previously in some of their tournaments. And I would like to give a big shout out to Parks and Rec for how beautiful the field looks. The Maintenance Department has done an absolutely spectacular job on Calvin Burrows and down to the edging of the warning tracks and removing weeds and some other things, and it's just beautiful, and the kids are absolutely ecstatic about it. Also, I'd like to congratulate the Coast Guard Academy on their swearing-in as well for our local Swab, Schur, who is a local here in Groton, who is now one of the summer Swabs, and I'm wishing him much success this summer, because I'm sure it's going to be very difficult. I would also like to see short-term rentals come before us, as I read today, Airbnbs are now banning parties at houses, and I would like to see that come to us sooner than later. I, I also saw you playing the ukulele on Facebook, so, very interesting. Looked like a lot of fun. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, on to approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes of June 7, 2022, and Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of June 14, 2022. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. See no discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously a in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, on to new business. Page 14 Wellness Hub Grant. Make a motion to authorize Town Manager John Burt to execute any and all paperwork to apply for and accept the National Recreation and Parks Association and RPA Wellness Hub Grant in the amount of $90,000 and refer to the RTM. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordalon. And we've got Director Barry.
Good evening. Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation, to my right, Jerry Locken, Manager of Recreation Services. We are pleased to be here tonight to present to the council for hopefully your approval two recent grants that we received. Both of these grants align with a couple of pillars of service to our community, both social equity and health and wellness. They also align with our, one of the goals in our strategic plan, which is to deliver excellent program services, facilities, and communications to meet the needs of customers, and they also meet objectives that we've identified as part of our strategic plan. It's to identify unrepresentative segments of the community and provide services to help them feel connected, to systematically identify and remove barriers that limit opportunities, and finally to provide or facilitate the delivery of a wide range of human services through supportive, educational, informational, and referral services in partnerships with outside agencies. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Locken, who coordinated internally with department staff and outside agencies to write and submit both of these grants.
So the, good evening, everybody. The, the first of these grants, the Wellness Hub Grant, is a grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association. We've been a member of the National Recreation and Parks Association during my entire tenure here, but, but anyway, we do have funding approved from them to make the Groton Community Center into a wellness hub. Right now, I'm sure councilors are aware that right now it's, it's mostly a programming space, so whenever we have a Parks and Rec program, people sign up for it and they get to go use the center. Just last year, we expanded that into some drop-in programming, and we hired a drop-in program director. Some of you might know, former RTM member Sheila Perry, who, who runs that program for us at the Groton Community Center. So, instead of being there for a program, it's, it's more of a drop-in place. You know, people can come to Thrive 55 and, and be a part of the activities here without being a part of programs. But that's one of the things that we're trying to change at the Groton Community Center to, to serve the community more equitably, for people who can't afford to pay or, you know, those types of things. The Wellness Hub Grant specifically targets nutrition and connecting people with services. So, councilors, I'm sure, are aware that recently we did a pilot dinner program with the, in collaboration with the Board of Education. Part of this Wellness Hub Grant calls for us to continue that type of programming and nutrition service for people directly from the Groton Community Center. It also calls for things like working with the hospitals or the Ledge Light Health District or TVCCA to bring those services directly into the Groton Community Center so that it's a place where people can go and, and, you know, almost a clearinghouse of services where people go and, and be served. So the grant is for an 18-month period. It's beginning, actually, July 1 and ends in the end of 2023. And during that time, we're going to gear up and, if the money is, if the grant is approved, gear up and provide these nutrition services, make those contacts with these community agencies, and bring them in and provide additional services out of the Groton Community Center. So with that, I think that's, I'll entertain any questions or answer any that you might have. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention, it's a $90,000 grant, and after the grant ends, it's up to the council and the, you know, the town to decide how and, you know, we may sustain that or, you know, choose to, you know, cut strings at that time. We're not obligated after, after 2023 to carry it on, however, it would be up to the council and through the budget process and whatnot to decide if there are any other resources we want to put into it, apply for another grant, those types of things.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Locken. I just wanted to clarify, so in our description in the packet, it says initially the grant will fund a staff member to establish coordinated relations, relationship services and resources with our partners and work to engage diverse segments of the community to utilize the Groton Community Center. So is this program actually funding a staff member or is it funding the nutritional program?
It's, the, the nutrition program is actually a program that we're going to collaborate with the Board of Education on. That's federal funded and through, you know, I'm sure folks here know, Food Services Director Ernie Koschmider, he's going to get funding for all of the food and stuff like that. So this grant does not pay for the food, it pays for our, our staff member to kind of coordinate things and to bring people in. So the food is not a part of, although it's, 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 it's one of the things that we, we are going to do with the grant, but it's not funded through the grant, if that makes sense.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And then is there a chance that we will have an opportunity to reapply for this grant after the 18 months, or is this a one-time deal?
That's something that we could apply, but it's not a guarantee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Locken. Thank you, Parks and Rec, for all the-
Can I interrupt for a second? Just, I had a couple people say they couldn't hear you last time you spoke. Can you make sure it's not on mute?
It seems to be on.
Does it say mute on here?
No, it's not working. Here you go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Locken, and thanks, Parks and Rec, for all the effort you do in applying for these grants and, and bringing all these new services to our community. Just a couple questions. It's a $90,000 grant. Is that divided between these two programs or is it together? You sort of mentioned there were two different parts of it. There's the health and wellness, and then there's the other part. The $90,000 is to establish a wellness hub at the Groton Community Center. So, part of our budget that we proposed was to pay for staffing, there's some equipment, some training. There are some mandatory things that are called for in the grant that we have to do. We have to send people to a, you know, a particular training or do some things like that, but that's, that's the only thing that this $90,000 does, is provide this funding to establish a wellness hub at the community center. So I think you mentioned there was also a social equity portion of it. Is that wrapped into the? The social equity portion, the reason we're doing it is to support our social equity, the pillar of service that we have. We're trying to, you know, it's, 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 the whole reason that we're doing this is to promote social equity in, in the community. People who don't necessarily have access, that's why we're doing it. So the social equity is part of your mission statement- Correct. -of programs that you're doing, and this just- Correct. -this fits into that, that program. Do you need to add any more space or rehab, or is this mostly just for staff and training? Well, it, it, that's, remains to be seen. I, I think potentially if we establish successful linkages with these community partners, I think it might be reasonable to assume that they might want a little bit of space, a dedicated space in the building, so that those were things that we'd have to work out. And there is funding in our, in, in the budget that we submitted to, you know, make some minor changes to the building or a classroom or something like that to accommodate, you know, visiting nurse coming in or a community health worker or a, you know, a TVCCA staff member, that kind of thing. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalon?
Yes, thank you. This definitely aligns, obviously, with a lot of the things I believe in. I served on the HIC Committee back before, when they were looking at social justice and equity inclusion, so I, are we going to be partnering with our Human Service Department that we already have along with this?
Yes, our intention is to do exactly that. And you, and you did mention the HIC, and I would, I guess I should publicly say that several members of the HIC were very strong collaborators on the Town of Groton getting this grant. So with Human Services, absolutely, we'll, we'll be in contact with them to find out what services that we may be able to put in there. You know, maybe they have their staff working out of the community center a day a week or something like that to make that connection.
Right. So the work that I did with the HIC was interviewing folks that, you know, normally weren't being interviewed and tallying the data to collect the need for this. So I just want to make sure, I, I'm for it, obviously, but I don't know, would I have to abstain from the vote, John?
No.
No, okay. Just want to make sure. I think it's great, the work that I did on the part on the back end of this that highlighted Groton as a need base, I think this is a very important program. I would also consider that the town moved towards thinking about ARPA funds. Again, ARPA funds were given because of folks who suffered from COVID, largely minority populations and people that were underprivileged and, as described here, that struggled in these areas. So as we look to seek funding for this after the 18th month of this grant goes away, this is exactly what ARPA funds were meant to kind of go for, and so I would encourage the Groton Parks and Rec, if this program is a success, which I hope it is, that you guys seek to, to, to apply over the next couple of years for some form of ARPA funding, to carry it out at least another year and, and see how that goes. Also, as we learned from the Branford Manor contract that we have not been following since 2017, there's a section in there where the town staff should be infiltrating into their rec building down there, and at one point, I know you guys came before us, which I was very supportive, was about a mobility unit going in with books and infiltrating into those hardest-hit areas. We have the space there that we didn't even know we had in this contract, and now you have this program. Is there any thought of, of, of bringing these services right to ground level? Because the community center's on one side of town, but there's a whole other subsection that needs services. So is there any thought of collaboration of bringing this into Branford Manor?
So several years ago, we did put a mobile recreation component into the budget, as you, I think you're referring to. Unfortunately, with COVID, that, that actually was stopped, and it wasn't a part of a budget request, but your point is well-taken that, yeah, as we pursue social equity, most of our current focus has been on moving into the Groton Community Center, but certainly there is an opportunity in Branford Manor or other places in town for us to, to provide remote services.
That's great, and one of the things that folks in there are looking at, you know, services on helping them, when you look at like social justice and equality, it's also wrapped in with helping them how to become a homeowner, services like that, how to get their credit scores up, there's a lot of things, nutrition, and so that space would be great. So I've done a lot of work with the HIC with this. Unfortunately, the conflict of timing, I couldn't continue, but the many nights I spent and heard from the folks interviewed that, you know, that were willing to speak on the record, this is a program that I can get behind, and this is exactly what Groton needs, and I, I encourage, again, to continue this program as long as we can and try to, to request ARPA funds for this program. That's what the funds were meant for, and, and I, I can support this. If we're going to bring, I think the community center's in a great location, but now we also realize that we have an access point in Branford Manor, we need to bring the program to the people, and I think that would be awesome, and I'd love to come down and volunteer down there when you guys are down there, and I look forward to seeing this and, you know, continuing, and, and I think this could open up doors for other funding in the future, so, but I would encourage, I have a question for John, the Town Manager. Could ARPA funds be used to fund this program in, in, in another year and a half if we have funds still available?
Thank you. Counselor's time is expired.
Thank you.
You know, assuming we have a second round, it'd probably be about, about this time next year, but certainly if there's funds left, yeah, it's-
And, and I think this could open up doors for other funding in the future. So, but I would encourage, I have a question for John, the town manager. Could ARPA funds be used to fund this program in another year and a half if we have funds still available?
Thank you. Councilor's time is expired.
Thank you.
You know, assuming we have a second round, it'd probably be about, about this time next year, but certainly if there's funds left, yeah, it'd be completely in line with it.
Could they just ask now to apply?
The, it's the application, I, I don't think they're applying right now. They're, you wouldn't apply for next year right now. You know, right now is about the deadline. I think it's this week to apply for this round. I don't think they're ready to do-
I mean, they're in-house. I mean, I think they could drop an application. So, thank you.
Councilor Westervelt?
Thank you, sir. You may have already gone over this, but funding for a staff member, is that going to be somebody that is already employed by the town or is that, are we going to hire someone to manage this program?
I guess I don't, I don't know exactly the answer to that question. I think the job description for this position would need to be developed and we would go out and recruit a person who has the specific skills to do the work of this grant. Whether that person is currently on staff or not, I guess it's possible, but we don't, we don't have somebody just waiting in the wings to say that that's mine and, you know, that's, that's the job this person's going to do. That, we don't have that. But it very well could be somebody who works for us, but we just don't know yet.
Thank you very much.
Councilor McBride?
Councilor Westervelt, some of the questions I had, this looks like a great opportunity, but I, my question was in line with his in terms of what's the long-term impact to the town? Is this going to be a new position that we're going to carry over next year's budget in the following year's budget or do you think it's going to be eternal? I think that's an important discussion point. If this adds an FTE to next year, year and a half's budget.
Correct. The, the position that's in the budget is a, is a part-time position that, that this grant would pay for. So it's not like a full-time person or anything that we would be bringing on to, you know, you know, it's not a full-time staff person. But whether the, the decision to continue this after the 18 months is a, is a decision that the town would have to make. We have time to kind of evaluate how it's going, how it's working. Is it worth us putting our own money in? Is it worth us reapplying for a grant? Is it reapp, you know, is, is there ARPA funding? There, there's all kinds of possibilities that could come up, come about. And, and it's going to be up to us to evaluate all of those when the time comes. But for right now, this is, this is kind of a launching pad and then we, you know, get, get the momentum moving and then we can evaluate and decide how best to move forward.
So it's possible these funds will be used to reimburse the town for some of the services that somebody's providing now?
In all likelihood, we'd be hiring a part-time person.
Okay, that's a good question. This is a new hire.
Yeah, we just, most likely. Yeah. Unless there was a part-time person that met all the qualifications needed to successfully conduct this program, but-
But then that would be filled if they moved to us.
Correct. Yes. Right. Yes. Then the position that they had been in, we'd have to hire somebody else to be in that position. So-
So just long-term planning, this will probably add a half of FTE in the 24, 25 budget. That's, I'm just trying to think longer term, if it's successful, which we hope, which we hope it will be. So, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bordaloon?
So my thought would be, we've done it with other positions like the ARPA coordinator. I mean, I know you said New London did not have an ARPA coordinator, but our ARPA coordinator we hired as a contract. If the funding for that part-time position is going to be within this grant, wouldn't it make sense to then make sure that it's a contract position to start off with? That way, it's not a guaranteed carryover. It could be a part-time contract position. That way, you're not adding an FTE and you're adding it based on a need basis on the funding that is available. Is that something we can do, John?
Well, our coordinator is also an employee, but not a contractor.
I'm asking about the-
I know, I'm just saying, we don't typically, I think you'd have more trouble finding the right person as a contractor. Definitely be more expensive with a contractor.
It's worth a shot. I mean, it's, I mean, a lot of the things where people start off a new program, it starts off sometimes as a contract position with an end date, depending on if funding is available, if the, if the program's successful.
Depending on how that's structured, I think directly reporting to us would be an IRS issue. I don't think we could do contractor. You know, usually when you do a contractor, you're doing someone that is out of office. You don't give them office space. You don't give them a phone, any of that stuff. Otherwise, they're an employee. And what happens is if you get caught doing that, then you repay with penalties.
So you can't just have a contract position that is an employee that has an end date, that they're an employee-
Only if they have their own office space, their own phone, all that stuff.
I, I mean, I can, I can hear the concerns about adding it as an FTE. I think that should be addressed in here. I mean, in the writing here, it doesn't really say that you're hiring, does it state that you're hiring a part-time person?
So just, just to clarify, Parks and Recreation, we hire dozens and dozens of seasonal and part-time employees and they're, they're all at-will employees. You know, if, if we have sufficient registration, they get hours. If we don't, they don't get the hours. If we have, if there's a position in the budget and we're hiring them to do it, you know, the program ends and, and there's no guarantee of hours after the program ends. So, you know, I understand that it's a part-time position, but it's a at-will position. I mean, somebody, if, if we don't have funding at the end of a year and a half and we choose not to pursue another grant or choose not to, you know, fund it in some other way, the job ends. And, you know, that person, if, if they're a good employee, we probably try to hang on to them and put them into a, you know, another part-time position in a different program that we're already offering. Maybe, you know, maybe a, a mobile recreation position or something like that. Because when we find people like that, we, you know, we, we try to keep them on, but there is no guarantee. The person who is in this position would have no guarantee beyond the, well, really no guarantee even within the grant if, if we so choose to move in a different direction. They're at-will employees.
Well, thanks for explaining that. I guess I use the word contract, but if it's an at-will, is that how you call it? Then it's an at-will position. So it has a contract end date. So that explains it exactly. So where I work, we call them contracts because they have end dates when the job is off, it's over. If you're calling them at-will, then it's at-will. So it's an at-will employee that doesn't, and it's not a benefited position. It's a part-time position. And if there's not the funding or the program, then the position could go away or be reabsorbed. I think it's a great opportunity. Again, I hope you got a week, I guess, to get the ARPA application in. I think you should. I think this is a great way to infiltrate and I think, again, speaking on behalf, getting services into Branford Manor and having a mobile unit in there and utilizing the contract that we have with Branford Manor to make sure we're bringing services right to the people. Thank you.
All right. So seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Okay. The second grant we had was from the Connecticut State Department of Education. It's an enrichment grant. The state had $8 million that they were giving out to various communities to provide enrichment opportunities over the summer. There is a matching requirement. That matching requirement for us is all included in the budget that was already approved. So things like scholarships and staffing and some other things. But this, this funding actually helps us to do, you know, to things that we wouldn't have normally done, bring in entertainers to summer camp or taking extra field trips or buying extra supplies or providing even more financial assistance. Those kinds of things are what this grant is, is going to provide. It's $67,000 and change. And as I mentioned, the matching funds are already in the approved budget for next Friday, or this Friday, I guess. July 1, I guess we have that funding. The summer camp program actually began yesterday and we're on day two. So this funding would, would kick in for next week and for the rest of camp going forward. So I guess that this one is a, seems like a pretty simple one that we already meet the matching requirements. It's, we're not signing up for anything long-term. It's just to help make this summer better for those people in our summer camp.
Very good. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing Town Manager John Burt to execute any and all documents to apply for and accept the Connecticut State Department of Education, CSTE, summer enrichment grant program in the tentative amount of $67,397 and referred to the RTM.
Second, Bordaloon?
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Bordaloon. Councilor Casserian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we vote, I just want to disclose that my children are going to attend this camp this summer. So thank you to Parks and Rec for hosting these. I think they're great. Thank you.
Just realized, if that was in the budget for the match, which majority planned, like, you'd planned unlikely getting this grant in the budget then, including match, you're just going to take it from another source than the, what I'm saying is if it was actually in the budget and you attended it, then it doesn't go to RTM because it's already been approved. But if you're just taking general dollars available, then it does.
I guess I, I think it's possible that we'll exceed, that we could potentially exceed the appropriation we had kind of planned for summer camp.
Okay. Councilor Bordaloon?
Thank you. Is this some of the funding that some of the other state towns were getting, like New London got funding for?
Yes.
One of the things I heard, and maybe it kind of segues off of the other grant that we just talked about, is you talk about, you know, equality, accessibility. I'm excited to see the low-income scholarship, which was one of the things I was advocating when this came before us as a budget item. What we're finding, another thing is minorities at a large percent through the HIC program and the data that we collected there is the amount of minorities that do not have access to water and not able to swim. And between these two, I know New London was opening up free swim programs and things like that and helping people get access and providing transportation. We saw this after Katrina, even on coastal communities where large populations of minorities live, people died because of drowning. And some towns and states even make swimming part of a graduation requirement. Unfortunately, we do not have a pool at Fitch, but it is a great opportunity. And I'm just wondering, between the two, are you guys planning to close those inequality gaps with minorities making sure they have the right to learn to swim as a, as a, as a health concern?
In terms of the grant that we submitted was only for our summer camp, I do agree with you that having everybody in your community having the ability to swim is important. And for Parks and Recreation, we do offer swim classes throughout the year, although at this time, we've kind of been impacted. We still have not fully recovered from COVID. We're hoping to offer that again, beginning in the fall, assuming we can get qualified staff to do that. Right now, there is a shortage, in fact nationally, of qualified lifeguards and people who work in, you know, aquatics programs. But your, your point is well taken. We live in a community that's surrounded by water on three sides. Yes. So community swim, learn to swim program is extremely important. The funding that we requested does not cover that, however.
I was just, because it is for Parks and Rec and I know that, like New London, they were saying when the kids go to the beach, you know, they're working with the kids down there. So there's a way to kind of infuse that in there indirectly, you know, if they're doing beach trips and things like that.
I think if, if we would have applied with that intention, I think we would have a, a better opportunity to do that. But we, we chose to apply based on enriching our existing summer camp program and not specifically in, in terms of, you know, water-related activities or learn to swim program.
Well, I appreciate that. Maybe that's something we can bring up, another ARPA fund thing or on the other backend of the grant that you were talking about with equality. There's a way because there's definitely a gap there. So thank you. And maybe next year, you guys can add that in and, and apply if there are grants out there right now to, to make sure that, that, that gap is being closed. But I'm excited about this grant. I think it's going to do great things. And I'd be interested to see the data of people that apply and hoping that you're getting the word out on social media across town in the city side and the town side to make sure people know that the grants are available for school. Because one of the things that we, on the long-term recovery committee that we identified is folks having trouble affording childcare and summer camp is going to fall just in that same frame. So I just really want to, you know, get a post up there so folks know that this is available as scholarship. Thank you.
Councilor Mumgarden?
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief, but want to commend you for applying for this grant. Just out of curiosity, I understand Groton Public Schools also operates a summer camp called Tree House. This is separate from that camp, correct? And the, I know they charge, there's about eight weeks. They charge 225 for non-members and, or 250 for members. I assume that would be just if they're students within the public schools or residents of the, of the town.
I don't have any information on pricing for Tree House programs.
And, and I was going to get to that. What, what is your pricing?
We charge, I think it's $95 a week.
$95 a week, okay. All right. And then, and that's for any participant?
That's for a town resident. A non-resident would pay $20 more, so 115 a week.
115, okay.
And we also do charge extra for field trips that if, you know, if we're going to the zoo or to the beach or something like that, we would charge a, a fee to cover the expenses related to going to that trip.
And in the case where somebody couldn't afford to do that field trip or is there like a pool of funds or scholarships where?
Yes. We, we have a discount program that if people of various income levels come into our office and, and give us their income level, we assign a discount to, you know, based on their, on their income. So to date, I think we've given out at least $20,000 for our summer camp just, just this year in discounts on summer camp.
That's great. Thank you. No further questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. I'll just say briefly, you know, thank you always for looking out for grants and getting them, winning them and bringing them to us. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. All right. I think we'll do a 10-minute recess at this point. We'll be back at 7:30. We'll be back at 7:30. Test at 7:30. Next on our agenda is ordinance to establish property tax payment for surviving spouse of fallen emergency workers. I'm going to skip past that momentarily. The moderator of the RTM wants to come speak to us. She's not here at this time. So, I'm going to move forward to 5D Navy honorary road name request, Crystal Lake Road, page 41. And John, you can do the background on this, but I just want the council to know that if we want to have this by the deadline of the reopening of the Nautilus, today is the last cow that we can get this done.
Or next Tuesday, right, to pass a resolution.
We can do a special.
If we want to try to make that timeline.
Right.
Their ceremony is scheduled September 8th. We discussed this at the September, or sorry, the June 14th cow. I was asked to reach out to the Navy to find out what their preferred or hopeful timeline was. That's what it is and I included here the process, the steps I have to go through to do that. Of course, it's up to the council whether you want to move forward soon or take time in this, the September 8th. And I compiled what I had down for the ideas for names received so far. Counsel Westphal, I tried to get the ones, I think I wrote down the ones that you brought forward too.
I think they're all there.
Yeah.
All right. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I also put out a Facebook post and as I said at our last meeting when we discussed this, from the four that the Navy had proposed to us, which are A, B, C, and D on our packet, as well as some of the ones that I had received, which I don't see in here, which was like Jimmy Carter Avenue or Way. The responses that I received the most were, by far, basically is the Nautilus Avenue. And I was curious as to how you think you might be going about potentially choosing this and how you might, are we all going to name something? Are we going to do it by emotion per name or should we just state what our thoughts are and majority rolls?
I think everyone can first state what they prefer. If a name has a potential majority, someone can make a motion, get seconded and we just vote on that name if it's got a majority, then that's it. If not, we can keep trying.
So, are we, like, are you going to go around and maybe take, you know?
Yeah, everybody can speak and talk to their preference, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And you prefer Nautilus Ave?
If we're going around, yes, I would pick Nautilus Avenue.
Okay. Counsel Jones?
I'm fine with either A or B. Either one of those is fine with me. But I guess if it was a preference, I'd be fine with Nautilus Ave also. But Submarine Ave, Submarine Capital is fine too.
Okay. Counsel Baumgartner?
I'll go with K and then also it was mentioned several times, I think once by Counsel Westphal, Jimmy Carter Way. So, I'll add that to the list. Also caution against Nautilus Ave, there's a Nautilus Drive in Groton, unfortunately.
Okay, so. And your other one was Submarine Capital Memorial?
Yeah.
Okay. I prefer Submarine Capital Ave and I guess Submarine Capital Memorial Drive. Counsel Board along?
I did some research on Rickover and I know that that, but I see some negative comments. Obviously, some people get away from naming things after people. Some people, even the Jimmy Carter, I mean, so I think it's better to stay away from names because, so with that, I kind of like Submarine Capital Memorial Drive and so K and then A. Nautilus is overused already here. We already have a Nautilus Road in the town of Groton. So, again, I'd go K and then A.
Counsel Westphal?
Thank you. As much as I'd like to take credit for the Jimmy Carter reference there, which I will tell you, when I first got to sub school, going and seeing his picture up on the wall outside the captain's office was kind of cool, knowing that he was the only president to serve on submarines. That being said, the two that I like are K, Submarine Capital Memorial Drive, but also I think Eternal Patrol Memorial Drive is very important just based on the history that the submarines have with Groton and the subs lost in, not only in World War II, but also the subs we've lost after those actions with the Thresher and also the Scorpion. Thank you.
So, that was A and E or K and E?
I'm sorry?
Which submarine capital one, the A or K?
K.
K, okay.
Or E.
K and E. Okay. Counsel McBride?
Thank you. I think these are all good recommendations, but I'd like to, my preference would be A, Submarine Capital, and I would spell out the word Avenue. And the reason being is I think some of the other ones may be somewhat limiting. Nautilus is reflecting just that, that one submarine, although it's, you know, monumentos that it was here, it's just not, you know, we're the submarine capital of the world, so I think I'm going with that. Thanks.
Counsel Caserini?
Thank you. I asked PAC 200 today to give us some feedback because I thought it would be nice if we had a Scouts PAC, give us some feedback. I got little feedback, but Submarine Capital Avenue and Submarine Capital Memorial Drive elicited the little feedback that I received. So, my choices are those for PAC 200.
Okay. All right, so just back of the napkin calculations. Counsel Franco, would you like to put a sec, everyone put two in, except for Counsel McBride and Counsel Franco, would you like to divide your vote up like everyone else?
Sure. Well, the second choice of the responses that I received would be A, the Submarine Capital Avenue.
And McBride, if you choose, would you like a second option?
If I have to, I will, but the reason I'm not choosing a second because I think the seconds are limiting, whether it's Nautilus or Memorial is, Memorial is not, you know, it's not including every person that participated in submarine.
Okay. No problem. All right, so. I've got six people that expressed some interest in A. Five for K. Two for B. One for E, one for E and one for Jimmy Carter.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
To select A, Submarine Capital Avenue, as the honorary name for Crystal Lake Road.
Second, Board along?
By Franco, seconded by Board along for Submarine Capital Avenue. Counsel Board along?
I think it's exciting. I recently had a son who just joined the sub force and is in school on the base and I'm happy to be a part of this naming and I think it's a great effort of the council to come up with a name together and it's really exciting.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, would like to particularly thank Bob Ross, also a veteran of our US Navy in particular, a subette, also the Director of Military Affairs for the State of Connecticut. He had reached out to me a few months back, asking if this is something that could bring before the council. So, glad we could do this in an expeditious timeframe. I know we have a lot on our agenda and, but glad we could do this before our deadline and make it in time for festivities coming up this fall. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just put my support behind the Submarine Capital Avenue. It would then honor both active service and those who have passed or have gone through something. So, it covers the whole range of all of our submarine force, so.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to retiree pension COLA, page 42. Manjubur?
Wait one second, I've got to promote Ms. Green, Mrs. Green. Oh, I'm set.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi. So, I am back to talk about the retiree COLA. I did make an adjustment from the original packet that you received. I added in another option for a COLA percentage because I heard from a couple of unions that wish me to put forth some numbers that differed from what my recommendation was. So, as you know from your packet, every two years, all of the pensions have written into it, the option for discussion between the town and the union for something to be brought forth to the council for possible vote of an increase. We did an actual real study, would be two and the two and a half percent and we added on an additional 4% because there were some unions that... We did an actuarial real study, would be two and a two and a half percent, and we added on an additional four percent, because there were some unions that put forth that number, and you can see by the communication in your packet, their reasoning. If you have any questions, let me know. But the actuarial report, it does show for each percentage, the increase in accrued liability, and that's over a twenty-year period, because that's the period we use for amortization, so that's what they utilize.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the council? Counsel McBride?
I just have a couple of comments, I guess, questions. The prior, the prior increases were one percent, I believe, is that correct?
I believe so.
That's correct, yes.
One percent and two percent. I guess, my concern is, I understand we talk about COLAs a lot, and everybody wants to get increases, but I do have concerns with these amounts, and the reason being is, I'm looking at this strictly from a financial standpoint. And if we look at the 2.5% COLA, although it appears to be only $119,000 increase, the increase in the liability is 1.3 million, which is a very large number. And I know the town's done a terrific job on reducing its OPEB liability, reducing its pension liability. I believe the financial statements indicate the 95% of achieving that amount, so I'm just wondering if the timing is right now, because if we're, if we're trying to get to 100% funding, this is going in the opposite direction, because we're in effect increasing our pension liability. And we've made such good progress, I think this goes in the opposite direction. The other concern I have is, what has the market turmoil over the past six months done to our pension assets? If they've gone down fifteen, twenty percent, we're, our liability is going to be much more lower than the 95%, so I have concerns about doing this at this particular time. So I would be more in favor of more of one percent. I understand people want COLA adjustments, but if the end result is to get this liability down, I don't think the timing is appropriate. And just, I know you shared some information, if you backed into some of the, some of the wages, you know, let's say the police union, if you backed into the number in the union of thirty-nine, and the two and a half cost increase is forty-three thousand five, that's saying the estimated pension, average estimated pension is forty-four thousand dollars, so that to me is a pretty decent pension. And I'm more in favor of a one percent increase than, than two, two and a half, or four percent, so just wanted to provide some, some feedback on those financial ramifications. Thank you.
And I can certainly get those percentages if you want and have them sent out. They usually have a few day turnaround with our actuary, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Well, I think for, you know, I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do, they may just want to move forward with one of these, that may not be necessary. But I mean, one percent, we could, you know, easily, it's not a one-to-one, one-to-one number, but a one percent COLA, if we just take the four percent, you know, we cut it into four, so the 191 would be, you know, forty-eight thousand or so, and the two million dollar increase in liability would be a five hundred thousand increase in liability, just, you know, raw numbers, it'd be twenty-five percent of the four percent, so. But thank you for willing to do that if the council decides to move in that direction.
Thank you. I just want to note that Counsel Parker has joined us at seven forty-five. Counsel Bordelone?
Yeah, so what will we have to do? I mean, I can, I can understand where Counsel McBride is going with this. I think that we should also add, you know, the previous, like, the, the middle road of staying at the same one percent in our option on here. I'd be interested to see what the numbers would look like if we went one and a half. That way, there is an increase, right? It's a small increase, and we have two and a half on here, but wouldn't one and a half be a nice middle road? I think it also would meet the need of what Counsel McBride stated, but there is a small increase. So I just think that we should also always, you know, there's no numbers or percents worked out. They jump right to two percent, and it would be nice to have the one percent and the one and a half preceding this. So is that something that could be calculated, or could it be voted on, Town Manager?
I think we could use the math that Counsel McBride utilized, so if we have 191, 200, oh, twenty-three, nine hundred, I believe, per half. So I would come out with thirty-five, eight. Counsel McBride, is that what you're coming out with if we did a one and a half? Because I'm basing it off of the four percent, and that's only the annual cost increase I'm looking at. Of course, there's a projected actuarial over the twenty years, that is more than twenty times 191, 200.
I'm going to find my calculator.
It's divided in half, to your point, is ninety-five, six hundred, so it's very close to the two percent that he gave, which was ninety-five, five hundred. So seventy-five percent of that should be, oh, seventy-one, seven hundred, that's better. And this, this is just rough, rough math, it's not actuarially reviewed.
It should be close, though.
Yeah. My other question would be to Town Manager, we could just vote on the percent, and we know roughly where it would fall. Obviously, it wouldn't be exact, but I could support a one and a half percent. I think that gives a bit of an increase, but to Counselor McBride's reference, I do respect his ideas on these numbers. It's something he does every day. He works numbers for another town, and he's spot on with his observations and tracking on that. Maybe the two percent is not this year, but I could definitely support the one and a half. I don't think leaving it at one percent would be fair, and I could, again, I think if we're able to do it tonight, I think we should, and I think the one and a half is a good number. That's it for now. Thank you.
Counsel Westerville?
Yes, thank you. We are not actually contractually obligated to provide a COLA. Is that true?
That is correct. It's just provisions for the option for discussion every two years.
Okay. I just think right now that the Town of Groton, there are people in the town that are not making even some of these figures, and I just think that if we kept things level where they're at right now and took no action, I think that would be better for the Town of Groton. Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. Can you tell me, how many of these groups that are listed here pay social security? Who, how many of them receive it from their retirement from Groton?
I would say everybody but police. I believe there's a provision for police. The non-union police, I'm not positive.
So you're not sure if they receive social security?
Paying into social security, everybody does except police, and the non-union police will be the one I need to get clarity on, but all of the other unions, they do.
All right, so usually, when these things come to, before the council, there are some things that we, we look at, and we decide, what is this based on? One of those is the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, which basically is the change in price paid by consumers, and the reason why in the past, I believe, we went with either a one or a two, and I just very quickly looked, was CPI back in 2020 was 1.4%. Back in 2017, it was 2.1. 2016, it was 2.1. 2010, it was 1.5. So these were low increases by consumers of inflation, basically. Right now, the increase is seven percent for the year 2021. We're not even considering this year. When you, when you are somebody such as a police officer, and you are potentially just living off of your pension from here, you are in a very fixed income then, and although everything is increasing, your retirement through the town is not. I did have somebody contact me, and they talked to me about their thoughts on the matter, and how they're, they don't receive a COLA on their, their pension. But municipalities, on the norm, give COLA, and in private industry, they do not. So I, I would, I would be in favor of at least the 2.5% considering all that's going on. And the reason being is CPI, I mean, Consumer Price Index is going at seven, which is, it's the highest number since, like, 1981, it said. So if you're looking at people on a fixed income, and you care about people who are retired in our community, and that worked for us for potentially thirty-some years, I think this is what we, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, I should just, Director, just explain the numbers here. So I'm just going to take, I'll take the town non-union, just so I understand how it works. So the thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, can you just tell me what that number is?
So that's the actuarial representation of accrued liability, so our potential over a twenty-year time period, because we use a twenty-year amortization, and then they ran it with a two and a half percent to show what the increase is, so you see that two hundred and twelve thousand dollar difference. And below that...
No, go ahead, sorry.
That's all the actuarial group, and below that, you'll see the annual cost, and going across is the total, so 119 per group. So for town, non-union, it would, two and a half percent would be a actual nineteen thousand, four hundred dollar increase and so forth for everyone going across the page. And when you look up, that's the actuarial grouping of the difference in evaluation.
So this number, the thirteen, five, two, six, this is how much we're liable for over the next twenty years of pension for that particular group? Is that?
Yeah, because if you look across, you'll see that N number, seventy-two, nine, forty-seven, one, sixty-six, I believe that comes from the 2021 actuarial report. So that's the baseline that they're using and working off of.
So that's how much money we owe, or will owe over the next twenty years? Is that?
It's the current value of accrued liability from the most recent report, which was seven, one, twenty-one, and then all this data comes from that, and they work off of that and add on top of it.
Okay, okay. And then, how much do we pay annually for our pension amounts? Is there a number? Is it, is that number divided by twenty? Like, what's, how much money do we actually, for all our pensions, how much do we pay? This is everybody's scrabble.
I have it for multiple groups, including Board of Ed and others, so I would have to subtract it out and do, if you want to give me a couple of minutes of the math, and I have it broken out by retiree group, the total annual.
Just a rough number, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much we actually... I guess you, this, this would be, this number of mine is the education, I would believe, right? I mean, it would be all the town.
Well, we have Board of Ed, which is at least, I want to say, a million, million and a half, a little bit for Ledgely, close to a million for Quonic Bridge, so I'd rather add it and give you a better number.
Okay.
Because these are large numbers.
And then the difference, this, the 119,000 is how much we then, that would be the increase of whatever that number is that you're adding up. Is that correct?
So the 119 is just for the groups that we, or you, I should say, have the power to vote on to increase.
Okay.
So that's the actual dollar amount that we'll be adding on top, spending more.
Oh, whatever we did, whatever we, whatever that total number is. Is there a recommendation that you have? Is there a town recommendation in here that, that the town is putting forth?
At the bottom, I recommended the two and a half percent.
Two and a half, okay. All right, thank you. I'd just be interested, when you come up with the number, just how much we do actually pay in, in our pension every year? Or maybe it's in here? Is it in here?
The what?
How much we pay in pension?
Should be.
Should be, yeah.
The total, but I don't have the breakout in the budget. It's about three point seven total.
I'll give you a very... Like about eight million. Let me take a look at our actuarial report, because they also break it out by all of the different groups, even inclusive of Board of Ed, which does a cover us.
In the financial statement, pending six, thirty, twenty-one, it was eight point nine million of, of benefit payments, including refunds to employee contributions. That's the total payment. That's not necessarily what's budgeted, because the budget, as John said, I think was, was three and a half, three point seven. Because you have gains on your investments that offset some of the amounts you have to pay out.
And it's just, if you take the three point seven and multiply it times twenty, you're, you're at seventy-four million, so that's pretty close to the seventy-two million, so.
Came out without eight, but I think to your point, the financial report, that was just my big math.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank, thank you.
Counsel Caserini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel McBride brought up the pensions being around forty-four thousand dollars. But what hasn't been brought up is how these union people get there. And these union members are, I don't know how else to say it, but they're working their tails off right now, away from their families, and working a ridiculous amount of overtime just to get their pensions to forty-four thousand dollars in an economy that, quite frankly, is failing everyone right now. So not only are they working their tails off, but they are spending their time serving our community. I will be supporting the two and a half percent. Quite frankly, I would support the four percent, because I agree with the unions that I, I don't think that, you know, the cost of living is just too high right now. You know, people joke about cops and working overtime and padding their pensions, but what people don't really understand is that there's a cost for doing those things, so I will be supporting the two and a half percent. Thank you.
Counsel Westerville?
I apologize, I might, should have brought this up before, but it just, I just realized, the fact that I am in, in AFS CME union, does that affect my ability to vote in this?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to state it, just to have it out there.
I'm sorry?
It's good to state it, just to have it out there, but no.
Yeah, as I'm reading this, I just looked at my own union thing and realized that I'm part of that, but thank you.
All right, I'll just state briefly, I think I've heard all the arguments here for one percent, one and a half percent, two and a half percent. I think I agree mostly with, with Counsel Franco, although I will ask, Manager Bur, is this the only escalator mechanism in these contracts?
Yes, yes.
So there's no, okay. Yeah, I, I think, I think inflation is too high. We've done two percent two years ago, I believe, and inflation wasn't this high, so I think, I think going to two and, I think we have to do at least two percent, but, but I agree with the recommended two and a half percent.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve a 2.5% COLA for active retirees beneficiaries that have been retired for five or more years in the town non-union police, police non-union steelworkers, supervisors, grates, and telecommuners groups as of July 1st, 2022. I so move.
Second, Caserini.
Two and a half percent moved by Franco, seconded by Caserini. What I see here now, I'll just correct myself, we did two percent four years ago, one percent two years ago. Counsel Franco, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think I basically spoke to it, but also, if it wasn't noticed, there's a hundred and, on the spreadsheet that was given to us, there's participants that are eligible for COLAs are 165. And at two and a half, I believe it was two and a half, I did the math on, it equals out to approximately, to each person would get sixty, if you just did straight-line math, sixty dollars extra a month. It's not going to go far, but it will help people in in retirement who are on fixed incomes, and, I mean, for right now, I think the, the cost of fuel, either for home vehicles, is up 26% this year, so, I mean, I think it would be very helpful, just to be able to even get to appointments and such. to be able to even get to appointments and such, so, thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for town manager, so how is this, we've already approved the budget, how is this implemented, if we have this increase?
Goes into effect, I thought, correctionment for wrong, Director, isn't that the next budget year that it actually goes through, or is it, does it get retroed? Or for this...
Corrective, it's effective with the first payment in July, which usually is later in the month.
So it's upcoming?
So do we...
We would have to account for, depending where these other things, you know, depends where you come out, I mean, it's not a ton of money in the grand scheme and things, so you'd see, you know, do you need a fourth quarter transfer, or could it just be covered? You know, something, something else, the benefits might be lower, so.
So it's already built into the budget in some fashion?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Worst-case scenario, it was a fourth quarter transfer.
To, to cover the difference. Okay, so I, I'm, I'm fine, I can support the two and a half percent also, I think that's fine, so, thank you.
Counsel Bordelon?
Am I able to put another motion on the floor at the time? I'd like to put a, a motion on the floor for one and a half percent.
I'll second that.
One point five percent moved by Bordelon, seconded by McBride. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of things that we all want, and keep in mind that some people have jobs that they don't get pensions at all. So we're justifying how much, you know, there, there, a lot of people in the community work with jobs that are pensionless, and they have to pay into their own pension, so, everybody works just as hard, and this is great to be part of a union, but not everyone is afforded the opportunity to be part of a union. And I think unions are wonderful, but we also have to look in what we're putting on the backs of the taxpayers. My question is for the town manager, in future, is there a way that we can prevent a fourth-quarter transfer by predicting a little bit better and earlier on in the budget cycle? Because some of these other things that we budgeted for, that people wanted, you know, we could have offset that by, you know, this, this increase. Is there a reason we're not adding that or foreshadowing a little bit here?
We never quite know where it's going to go, plus ultimately, even if you have to adjust the budget to reflect it, it's going to come out of the pension fund, not out of general fund.
It'd be great to just have it as a topic in future, around that time, to look at what we're funding and saying, this is what a two percent would do, this is what a three percent would do, this is what a four percent, this would be a level item. It would just be, be fiscal responsible of us to kind of address some of those needs, even though we're not voting on them at that time, some foreshadowing, and, and helping us to kind of depict, because there's some things on our budget that we approved, that we might now consider not going for, and allowing for a higher percent to go up, as, as it was stated. So I'm going with the one percent, I do think there should be some form of a raise, and that's what I can stand behind right now. Thank you.
Point of clarification?
Yep.
What is the one percent increase per year?
The motion on the floor is one and a half percent.
I mean, one and a half, what is the annual?
I have it at seventy-one, about seventy-one thousand.
Seventy-one, six-two-five approximately, which is a total...
I have seven.
It's about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand total increase, difference for the... Julia Parker just had to leave, she's coming back.
Okay.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, question for the manager, I, I know in years past, we've structured the, some of the, when we've deliberated on COLA increases, I think this is the third one I voted on in my five-year-plus years on the council. We, I think it was two thousand and eighteen, we did one, a, a higher percentage for union, and then a slightly smaller percentage for non-union. Do you remember what the, those percentages were, or...
I don't, but the Director may have that.
So I have in twenty-twenty-one percent for all-town unions and non-union, twenty-eighteen, two percent for all-town unions and non-union, twenty-sixteen, two percent for non-union police only, and then there's a gap going back to two thousand and eight, where it looks, was the prior time before twenty...
I'm sorry, I misspoke, I apologize. Okay, so, so in, in years, has, have we ever structured in, COLAs in a way where union got a certain percentage, and non-union got a separate percentage?
It looks like the last couple of times, it's been consistent, where it's been in across the board, and that was my interpretation in conversation with the union itself, or my recommendation.
Okay, and just that, in our packets, we've received several emails or letters from the heads of unions, both active and retiree, and so, what, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see any for, you know, speaking on behalf of the non-union, is that correct?
There, I actually did receive something from everyone, including a non-union member that contacted me directly, and I discussed with them, I met with everybody, took their info, I came back and shared what my suggestion was going to be, and I gave everyone the option, if they were comfortable with it, they didn't need to have anything further, and I would bring support, and those who weren't comfortable with it, those were the ones that I included the additional language, so you can see where they were coming from in their perspective. So the non-union and anybody who don't see, they were fine with the two and a half percent.
And, and specifically, the town non-union, so if you look on page forty-three, you'll see, it's a chart, what the, you know, the projected, the valuations, and then what the cost would be to the town. So the town non-union, it looks like there's twenty for, like, I'm sorry, what, what are the, yes, there's twenty-nine eligible participants for that COLA, what do the bulk of those municipal worker or retirees consist of? Like, what, what did they do for our town?
I'm sorry, you want to answer your question?
For the town non-union, you know, it's, it's somewhat intuitive when you see police union, you can infer that most of them were police officers, sworn police officers. In the case of town non-union, what does the bulk of the municipal workforce or those retirees consist of? Like, what departments, what, what do they do?
Oh, okay. So I can't speak to these current folks and their titles, I can say non-union would include department heads, it might include some assistants, deputies, the new police position that we just hired, that grows out in the community, that's non-union, I believe ARPA is non-union. So there's a, a mix of folks who perform a different level of work that would be included in there.
And then police non-union, I mean, there, thirty, there's thirty-nine retirees, which is quite significant, it looks like the second largest, aside from the GMEA, but there's seven for police non-union, would that consist of, like, former chiefs and...
That would be my interpretation, if you want, I can pull the pension and see who they define in there, it could also be captains, I believe, if this was...
Captains, okay. So, and, and I ask because there, it wouldn't be, say, if, like, could somebody be pulling two pensions, say, one from the retiree, or, you know, as, say, their reunion, police officer retire, and then come back as a captain or a chief, would they get separate pensions, or it's all, all the same?
We don't do that.
Okay.
Internally here. I mean, any one of these people, though, could go someplace else, you know, and, and gain another pension.
And then, lastly, the GMEA, but mostly public works, correct?
Grades you're referring to, so steelworkers would be public works.
Steelworkers, yeah.
In part. And the grades would be some professional staff that you might see in planning and zoning, some staff in finance, like office assistants, fiscal assistant one and two.
Excellent. All right, I think that helps. Thank you.
You're up.
Counsel McBride?
Yeah, just one last comment, I just want to make it clear what, what's happening here from the financial line. The total, the total pension liability of the town is a hundred and forty-five million. Our planned fiduciary net position, our investments are a hundred and thirty-eight million, so we're at ninety-five percent of funding that liability. If that investment has gone down ten percent, we've lost thirteen point eight million dollars, which means that a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars of investment is now only a hundred and twenty-four, which means we're going to be at eighty-five percent funding our pension liability. Adding one point three million, which is the two point five percent, would bring us down to eighty-three, eighty-four percent of our funding liability. So although we're talking about a hundred and nineteen thousand and seventy-one thousand, I think the bigger picture is, that pension liability is going to go up one point three million dollars, and it's already gone down significantly due to the market crash. So I, I, I agree something's needed, and that's why I'm supporting the one and a half percent, because I think, you know, our, our pension liability is, is going in the wrong direction, so, thank you.
I have a point of clarification.
Yep.
What is the, where are we standing compared to other communities with our pension funding?
We're doing pretty good. I can't tell you what the average is, and maybe the Director knows more.
I don't know the average, I think we're pretty high, from public sector, whether it's federal or public in general, but that's just my feeling, I couldn't quote you surrounding towns, or where in the state of Connecticut we fall. I just believe we're in the upper end of it, that we're doing.
Just simply because previous years after year, we've heard that we are very well situated compared to other communities that are much way lower than what we are. So I think, I don't, I don't know of any community that's even near a hundred percent, so I think we're doing absolutely phenomenal compared, even considering potentially where even the state is, they're funding, even though they're throwing in massive cash to try and up their funding. Another thing I just want, because there are newer counselors here, we went from two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen without giving any COLA whatsoever. And then when it came in in two thousand and sixteen, I, I was there, and we gave them two percent, because they had gone in for so long with nothing, and they showed up at our meetings. They, they were filling the room, they filled the room, because we hadn't taken care of them, and they were suffering, and they really, they needed assistance. And they came and they spoke to us, in great numbers, and they sent numerous emails, and they came in person. So when you state that there was nothing between two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen, and there was a big gap, that is why. And I don't even know what they did, and they're prior to two thousand and eight, and what the policies were. So these people are living, many of them, even though they did get a two percent and a one percent previously, I mean, they, that's three percent since two thousand and eighteen, I mean, two thousand and eight. I, I don't think that's, that's very much, and that's how you really take care of the people that have given, like, probably thirty years of their, their life to the community, our community. So I just, I just, I wanted to give that little piece of information. Thank you.
I just have a question for Director Green, to Counsel McBride's point, I believe the market's down eleven percent over the, over the last year, about, but how, and I don't need a specific number, but how conservative are our investments? I wouldn't expect we would be tied to the market a hundred percent, so I'm sure you have some other bonds or something that, that haven't seen a decrease. Do you know about how down we are?
I don't have that with me, when we do have our pension board meetings, we have the investment company that comes and real allocates, I believe, quarterly, give a presentation, so they manage, to your point, the volatility and what we're actively investing.
Okay, but just, like, if we see the Dow Jones or the S and P five hundred down eleven percent, we shouldn't expect to be down that whole eleven percent specifically, since...
Hopefully not.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a pretty diverse portfolio.
Right, right, yeah, so I'm sort of asking, because I don't know what you're invested in, but should we be, expect to be, our decrease should be lower than, than the market?
That's a very large question, I think it would be, but that's just from a layperson's opinion of looking at the mix, and is it more conservative, and you're going to see a smaller percentage? Likely so, but without the full, what is the word I want? The pie chart in front of me to say the percentage is of risk value, I think so, but I can't guarantee it at this exact moment.
Okay, thank you, that's just from my understanding.
Yes.
Counsel Bordelon?
Town manager, do you have those numbers at all?
I'm trying to find them online.
Should we wait a minute, so we can answer that question? I think that's important to know, what our, I mean, it's not part of our packet, and we don't have anybody from finance here, so we're voting on numbers that are affecting the town, and there's a chance our numbers are down, and...
It looks like, as of three, our latest info is three thirty-one, twenty-two, year-to-date change, we're down five point six-one percent.
Five point six-one percent. I mean, because I think it's important to fund it, and I think any increase is great. I, everybody wants two percent, I would like it, I'd like five percent, but I think Counsel McBride makes a great statement, we, we have to weigh what we're taking and losing. If this was my account, gains and losses, as much as I want that, I, I would have to consider the risk, and it's great, I mean, we don't have the numbers of the other towns, but we're not the other towns, and we want to make sure that we have the availability and the means to sustain going forward. So one point five percent is still an increase, but we, we're, we're saying we're down, you know, that, that percent, so I think that's important information. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote first on one point five percent. All in favor, say aye.
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 That fails, three in favor. Bordelon, McBride, Westerville, six opposed, zero abstaining?
I'd like to propose another motion.
What's your motion?
I'd like to propose two percent.
Is there a second? I see no second. So we will vote on two point five percent. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have seven in favor, two opposed, McBride, Westerville, zero abstaining. On to page forty-eight, National Opioid Settlement Acceptance.
Thank you, Director Green.
Have a good meeting.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, Manager Burt?
Sure. As you know, the National Opioid Settlement has come up prior here on discussions, we've received part of what we'll get, we received the, there's two pieces to it, there's the distributor payout, and then there's J and J's payout. Distributor one is over a, I think it was eighteen years, I believe that's, yeah, eighteen years, distributor payment's over eighteen years, we received the first payment, twenty-two thousand, two sixty-three, and eighty-six cents, we can anticipate about that every year for eighteen years. What we don't have yet is the J and J payment, we, we don't have any idea what that amount will be, other than we're told it's going to be a nine-year period, but it's going to be front-loaded heavy, the first three percent with eighty percent of their funding coming in that first three years, so we're waiting for that. So now we're just trying to, you know, get some direction on what to do with that twenty-two thousand while we're waiting on the, any other funds.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Franco?
I, after reading this, and I'm, I'm glad we got something here, I don't think it's as large as we were all hoping for. And the, and there's a resolution here, and, and there's a place to allocate, and there's a blank space there, and my thought was that we should probably try and allocate it to a group that does not, that is not basically state-run, and that has some teeth in our community, that helps people with opioids, and I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the acceptance of the twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents from the National Opioid Settlement Plan to allocate the funding to Community Speaks Out, and to recommend acceptance of the funds to a representative town meeting, RTM. I so move.
Second, Casiri.
Okay, moved by Franco, seconded by Casiri.
And I was hoping that, I think $22,000 on one hand is, could do a lot and on the other hand, I don't think it's enough. But I would like to maybe send the full funding to them and I think with a bit, with a chunk that size that they could help a lot of people with it. And, and I hope the council would hopefully agree. Thank you.
Council Boardland?
I don't think we're doing our due diligence. I think that's a great organization. Who runs that organization, Council Franco?
It's by a board of directors.
And who's the, who's on, I mean, what I'm trying to say is we have nothing before us. I mean, I'm really familiar, I think they do great work. Filling in a blank tonight as our motion, like, is not really the, the direction that I want to go as a council member with $22,000. It's not as large as I had hoped. I think we should be doing some, we should have some people come before us and present why we should give them the funds. We shouldn't just be hand-selecting one organization and there's a possibility that we might want to split this money between multiple because they all serve different. Some, there's also organizations that serve just youth, youth only, some with mothers with addiction, some do a broad spectrum. I think as a council, we should really do our research first. My question to the town manager, what's our deadline?
No deadline. This isn't a recommendation here, it's in case you wanted to do something.
Right, right.
You can also, we can hold it in a trust account until we get another payment, see what the total is. There's different options there.
Right, I think we should wait for that other money. I think this is not a rush situation. I think in the meantime, we should be putting the information out, in outreach through our town and let people know that, that we are taking in candidates that are interested in applying for this funding and the council would make a decision. I, I think they should come before us. I'd like to hear from the boards about how they plan to use this money, just like we spoke tonight. We approved grants, we had approved grants and they had to come speak to how they were going to be used. I, I think that that, there's no rush on this. I think that we should wait for the other funding to come in and we should allow for other, I mean, there's, there's group homes that serve adolescent youth addicted that live in shelters, there's, I mean, the list goes on. We, tonight should not be, as a council, just selecting one and pushing that one forward tonight, even though I think that is a, an amazing organization and they do great work. Do other organizations even know that we have the option to allocate this fund? Have we put any outreach out yet, town manager?
No.
No. So we haven't done our work yet as a council, as a town. We can't just fill in a blank tonight and pass a name through. I mean, should I throw my, I mean, like, what other names are out there? Other councilors might not have other names. Does everyone have a name that they've planned to fill in the blank tonight? There's no names recognized, no one's come before us to interview. We have ARPA dollars and we're taking interviews and applications. There should be some process here to make sure that we're putting the money in the right organizations and that we should be, you know, some people love to do polls and tallies online. We've done it for other things on how we're going to do with our plastics. Maybe the town could do a poll on where we think this mon, money should go. We've done no outreach yet. So I think this is great. I think this is good information, but to just roll with it and rubber stamp an organization tonight, I don't think we're giving a fair shot to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll speak now. There's a great student organization, Students for Recovery, from Grasso Tech. They put on an event, Recovery Fest, earlier this spring. I attended with other councilors. And basically, every organization in the local area working on this issue was there and I spoke to all of them. I, Community Speaks Out was there. I love the work they do. I think they are definitely deserving of this money here. So I have one question for town manager Burt because the money that we were expecting to get was a lot larger and, and as you allude to, this, this is, this is a small piece of what we will be getting.
We have no idea. It's one of two pieces we'll be getting, but I don't know what that amount will be.
Okay. So, okay. There was some talk about setting up, when we did get the money, a group that would work on allocating this fund, these funds. It doesn't seem appropriate really to set up a group for $22,000. I was, honestly, if, if this is what the other group, what, what the other settlement's bringing, I have to say, I'm, I'm very disappointed. But I, I think for this specific purpose, we need to get the money out there. I don't think we can wait on when the next settlement will come. We don't even know how much that money is. I, I think when the money comes in, I think we should allocate it. This is a problem. And this money, that has been under, underfunded for many years. I, I really don't think we have the luxury of waiting to spend this. And I can, I can support Council Franco's motion. Council Westerveld?
I need to agree with Councilor Boardland. I really think that we need to have more information. I just don't, there's got to be a plethora of other organizations that are equally deserving. I'd just like to know who they are before we decide to throw all the money. Granted, we don't know how much total we're going to get, but giving any money away, I think we need to have options and know what those options are. Thank you.
Council Jones?
I have a question for Council Franco. Were you thinking that this amount would be for the next 18 years that they would get or is it just money for this year? This money just for this year, just to allocate the, the $22,000 for, for now? Or is this, were you thinking that this allocation is something that goes for the next 18 years?
The way the resolution, or the motion, it would only be for this year, as we just pointed that out.
So to kind of go on with, with the mayor is that doing just a contribution for one year doesn't sort of, we still have the time to go and look at all the different organizations and people can present, but we could do some good this year with this money going to this organization. And we can, next year, we make a change and we do something different. So we're not, you know, bound for the next 18 years that this money goes. It's just a single contribution for one year and then we can look at it, you know, when we have more time, but we get the good going immediately for our organization that has proven itself pretty well. So I think that's sort of how I always look at it, is a, it's a good contribution for 2022 and then 2023, we have the time to kind of analyze it and figure out what we're going to do.
Council Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly do not want to speak on behalf of the council, but I think we all agreed when Mayor Melendez tried to suggest adding a addiction specialist, we all agreed that this was a crisis. It's critical. And I don't think sitting on $22,000 and putting in an account is fair in an epidemic of an opioid crisis. We could save a life tomorrow by giving out this money to a local Groton nonprofit who has invested in our community. You know, this is why I wrote two referrals about recovery that I hope that we'll speak about. But, you know, I, I agree that there are many other organizations that could use this money, but we can get this money. We know Community Speaks Out, we know that they will work with other organizations in our community. And I think it's vital that we get this money into Groton as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do recall when Mayor Melendez brought forth the referral to explore establishing a, an addiction specialist position here within the town of Groton. Mind you, this was a position that was going to be independent of the work of any department housed in human services with a focus on recovery as opposed to, you know, being housed, you know, recognizing that treating addiction should not be punitive. You know, it is holistic and it's, it's a focus on, on health and wellness. And, you know, the mayor made a case with data, he made a presentation and he provided very compelling reasons, at least to me, as to why we ought to fund a position like that. Obviously, our council moved in a different direction, but I think he very clearly spelled out the merits of having such a specialist in, obviously, the issues we're having in our community and certainly across our state and the country with respect to addiction to opioids and particular fentanyl. And so it is my hope that any organization seeking these funds would also do as such. And I completely align my remarks with Council Franco and Mayor Melendez in stating, you know, the great work, obviously, that Community Speaks Out has done in our community. I personally donated for some time to the organization, as have, I'm sure, many others. But I do think absolutely, you know, we, we ought to do our due diligence in here as to how those funds are going to be expended. I think that's, just as a matter of fairness, as a matter of, you know, you know, doing our due diligence as a council for any organization that we expend dollars to. I've been very consistent in that, whether their people are my friends or not my friends. We have truly, honestly, an ethical obligation to do as such. And so I, I cannot in good conscience support appropriating any funds until we hear from organizations as to how they intend to expend those tax dollars. There is no ands or buts and that could very well mean that organizations such as Community Speaks Out gets those funds. But, you know, we, I, I still don't know, I mean, Council Franco, you, you made this referral. Do you have an idea as to how those funds are going to be directly spent?
Well, it is $22,000. And we could hold on to the money and have an organizations come in here, but $22,000 really doesn't go far. It really just doesn't. When you're, I will tell you, I, there was, there was somebody in our community that had approached me and needed help. And I brought them to Community Speaks Out. And they basically told the person, it's up to them that, like, they have to be willing to take the help from Community Speaks Out. But Community Speaks Out set them up in a, in a plan to basically have, to bring them to a treatment center in Texas to be there for a year. This is not, these are not cheap. I mean, they're sending somebody that needs that kind of help to be there in, in a rehab situation for a year. They help get people into, I don't know, homes after they get out of rehab. I mean, they, you know what they do.
Absolutely.
I mean, we all know what they do. I mean, we know what they spend this money on. They are helping people on the ground and they get calls all throughout, you know, in the nights and weekends and they, they go out and help people in the middle of the night and help get them into situ, into facilities. So I'm sure this money would help get people into facilities because facilities don't just usually take people always on for free. So there's cost involved in this or even travel to get people to these facilities.
Without a doubt. And certainly would not dispute that. But I think in the same vein where I recall even when, in, totally unrelated, but when we were vetting proposals for ARPA simultaneously with the budget process, when Thames River Heritage Park came before us. And they had made an ask that was a bit above what their initial ask was for, you know, outside agency funds, outside of, you know, within our budget process. And then we explained to them, hey, wait a minute, this ask would be far more appropriate in ARPA. And they said, okay, that's fine. And then they settled for the amount that they received normally, you know, through that, that process. So I'm just saying from the standpoint of, and I, I do believe they are worthy and I want to state that on the record. And I very well believe they are likely to get those funds if they go through that process. But I just think that for a matter of transparency, as a council, before we ever vote to expend funds, we absolutely have to hear from organizations, especially if we're voting on something that will require RTM approval. Any appropriation, I believe, in excess of $10,000 has to be approved by RTM. And case in point, even as, as we've seen this evening, where, you know, we'll be, we voted on an ordinance pretty overwhelmingly only for it to be rejected by the RTM, I, I think there needs to be some level of communication or understanding as to, you know, what those dollars are going to be expended on before we send it to the RTM, before we're kind of back at square one. So just for the matter of process and respecting kind of, you know, processes, processes that we've used in the past, I do think we should at least just accept the funds and then create a process for those funds to be distributed.
Thank you. Counsel's, time has expired. Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to bring up a point or a couple of points. We do not do this during agencies and outside agencies, us, where money is going to be banned. Say, okay, there's a dollar amount that they're asking or requesting and we approve it. Community Speak Out has not come to us, but we know of a local, we try to keep things local. That's-
Council Parker, we're having a little difficulty hearing you. You're breaking up.
I know. It's my, the internet keeps acting funny. I keep getting frozen. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you.
How many, how many programs around here? Especially some of us that either work in the police department or have medical knowledge, work in the medical industry, New London, every place, places. But we have, currently have, a place that's here locally that can help our residents. Will we not?
Yeah, we're still having a little difficulty hearing you.
We put the money where? All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're breaking up a lot. I don't know if you can find a stronger connection.
In favor for Community Speaks Out?
Did you say you're in favor? Yes?
Of Community Speaks Out, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Council Boardland?
I don't think it's a question of not being in favor, you know. I just think there's a process that we have to do. I think they're a phenomenal organization. We don't know how much other money's coming in. If we're not going to be waiting a ton of time, town manager, if we, has to go to the RTM anyway, we just invite Community Speaks Out and a couple of organizations that may be interested and maybe Community Speaks Out is the only person that actually shows up. That would take, what, a couple of weeks, tops? Pretty simple to put on. Come speak before. We put a little information on our town page, utilize our resources that we have this fund and that we're seeking a donation to.
The hard part is, we wouldn't be able to fit it on the next cow, maybe the 20, maybe the one after that.
Right, so it's weeks, not, not years, not months, weeks. And we knew about, when did we learn about these funds coming to fruition, town manager?
Say it again?
When did we learn about these funds coming into fruition?
In the last week or two.
But before that, we heard that they were coming down.
Oh, it's been going on, well, it's been going on for quite some time.
Quite some time, like, about a year, right. So the council, we did speak and, you know, I remember it was that we would have a process. So we can't say today that there's the rush and the anticipation, when on the back end, it has not come on the agenda, we could have been doing the work and interviewing multiple agencies that are interested in putting the word out. Now it's, here it is, we better do something today. I just don't think that's, that's exactly the process. We've known for over a year that money was coming and yet we've done nothing to vet or have anybody come before us. My speaking of this, I, I think Community Speak Out should get money, absolutely. But it's not fair until we do the process. Community Speaks Out, I know the Dela Cruises are a part of that, that community, which we all know as Democrats and have worked closely with them. And they've done great things. I've attended their online gala and auction. I won a beautiful wine basket and donated. But even I can't comfortably sit here and say, yes, give them all the $22,000 and come today with a name and just say, all in favor, say aye. It's about the process. It's not the company, the agency, the nonprofit, who runs it. It's merely about process. When we, when beautification came before us, we had asked what we were going to do with the funds. And one of our councilors sat on the committee and we had to go through the process before we allocated it. I think it's fair to have them come-
Point of clarification? I do not sit on the kid.
I won a beautiful wine basket and donated. But even I can't comfortably sit here and say, yes, give them all the $22,000 and come today with a name and just say, all in favor, say aye. It's about the process. It's not the company, the agency, the nonprofit, who runs it. It's merely about process. When we, when beautification came before us, we had asked what we were going to do with the funds, and one of our counselors sat on the committee, and we had to go through the process before we allocated it. I think it's fair to have them come...
Point of clarification, I do not sit on the committee, I am an alternate.
When you started the committee, I was on the furniture. It would be fair to just have them come out. So when could we get them on the agenda if we had to, to have them come out, speak to this, and put the word out?
I can't say, off the top of my head, where I can get them in. All depends on what else we have on the schedule. I don't have the schedule with me.
But it could be in the next couple of weeks, we can make a special meeting, and we can come out like we normally do, in and out of a meeting, and we could make it a priority, correct?
Yeah, on the 12th, we definitely can't fit it, maybe the 26th.
Right, so it wouldn't be that much longer. I think that's fair, and I think it would be appropriate, because other agencies may come out, and when more money comes in, we'd have other people lined up. I think that's the most fair process that we could do as a council. I mean, should I throw another name on the floor? And we should consider it, or should I run, I mean, tonight, we're, I mean, if that's the case, I'd like to throw five other names on the floor.
You can do so.
I mean, but that's, that's, that's not fair tonight to do. We should properly vet and have them come speak before the council about their good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I think we're all kind of on the same stage, talking about the same thing, so I have some thoughts. We know there's going to be more money coming down the road, so I think it's a good idea to start a process. We're all fans of Community Speaks Out, and we're supportive of their initiatives, and we also want to get this money working. So what I'd like to do is propose a motion to take 25% of those funds, 55, 6, 5,566, and give that to Community Speaks Out, and have them utilize that money for what they see fit, reporting back to us how they use it, and start a process in alerting the public that through 8/31, others can submit proposals to us to use the remaining 75%. And that will also start a process whereby, once we receive additional funds, we'll have something in place to allocate that money.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that number?
5,566, which represents 25% of the amount. It would not need RTM approval. The money's on the streets, they can start doing good work with it, but we also allow others to submit proposals by 8/31 for the remaining funds and other funds that may come in the future.
I'd want to give that a little thought, since it's a total grant of 20-something. I'm not sure it wouldn't have to go to the RTM. I'd want to think that through a little bit.
Or even if it does need to go to the RTM. At least, it's the process, Community Speaks Out's getting some funding, and we're saving some for other organizations.
And if it did have to go to the RTM, they'd probably want to know what all that's going to be, you know, it'd be hard to take just the 5,000 part to them, because they're not going to want to approve 22,000 when they only know where 5,000 is going to.
Point of clarification.
So what you're, hold on. So what you're saying is, if we divided this up...
There might be some hiccups with dividing it today.
Right, so what you're saying is, it's a grant of 22,000 which would go to the RTM. We can't split it up into four, and then each individual piece doesn't meet the 10,000.
Because it's not in the budget, and it's never been approved except, I'd leave, I'll talk over Cindy, but I think it's likely going to have to go to RTM.
Regardless, but, but, but what you're saying, but we can send the 25% to them?
Yeah. Or no? I suggest to approve that, not any other part of the 22,000 chunks. We could, I suppose, that way.
Okay, okay.
As long as they're only approving the 55.
Yeah, so we're still making the motion to accept the full boat, but only allocate a portion.
I don't think they'll accept the full boat without knowing what it is. I think they might approve a piece, though, because they approved a piece of the ARPA, so I would think they'd approve a piece of that. But they didn't approve the full ARPA until they know what it's going to be spent on.
Understood.
Point of clarification, I think if it's stated as such that we're allocating the 5, 25%, with the intention of a process to allocate the rest, that's how you present it, and that's something that people could agree upon, because there's, there's no process yet. We need a process, which is what we were planning to do at the beginning.
You're good, okay. Counselor Casiri?
It's all in how you present it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For everyone watching at home that doesn't have the packet in front of us, I just want to read what the requirement is. It says, "At least 70% of the funds are to be used to fund future opioid remediation efforts. If settlements proceeds, proceeds are used for something other than opioid remediation, the amounts and uses must be publicly reported." So this money needs to go back to the opioid crisis, that's part of this. I attended Recovery Fest, so I also got to see all of our local agencies, and some of them weren't local, some of them came from Hartford, and we had a lot of services there, which is great. From my knowledge, from the conversations that I had, Community Speaks Out is our only local nonprofit who doesn't receive any funding from another source. You know, we have GASP, but they receive funding from Legleight. There's other source, resources in our community, but they have another source, you know, funding their agency. The ironic part of the conversation that we're having tonight is that the collective goal of these agencies is to prevent the opioid crisis. And us giving $22,000 to a local agency that is dedicated to stopping the opioid crisis sounds like exactly what we're supposed to be doing. So I will be supporting the full $22,263.86 to Community Speaks Out, and then we can look at what we do with the future funding. And that way, we're getting the money out into the community immediately. Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other discussion. So we will vote first on, actually, okay, we will vote first on allocating 25% to Community Speaks Out tonight and accepting the other 75% without allocating it tonight. Is that a valid motion, Manager Burt, would you say? Accept 100%, allocate 25%.
Right. I mean, certainly, we can send that to the RTM.
Okay.
And if they didn't like it, they would reject...
Right.
...the motion and come back here.
Okay, okay. So that's what we will vote on first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I have McBride, Baumgartner, Westervelt, and Bordelon. Opposed?
Aye.
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 Counselor Parker? Okay.
Opposed?
Thank you. That would be Parker, Franco, Jones, Casiri, Melendez, and zero abstaining. Fails, four in favor, five opposed, zero abstaining.
I'd like to propose another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to propose 50% going to Community Speaks Out. Once again, the money's getting out there, it's going out fast, it's a good amount.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's over $10,000. And again, let's set our process, you know, if there's other funds coming in, it could be that the remaining amount is going to go to Community Speaks Out. It could be that the other money coming in will also go to Community Speaks Out. But let's do our due diligence and do the process, and I think this is a good diving starting point, and it supports a local agency that is well-deserved.
50% moved by Bordelon, seconded by McBride. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Fails, four in favor, five, four in favor, McBride, Baumgartner, Westervelt, Bordelon, five opposed, zero abstaining.
Point of clarification, if we oppose this full amount tonight to, this is to the Town Manager, could it also be stated in the motion that we're going to, we're going to create a process on future funding coming in? Sure. Okay, so I'd like to propose another motion.
What's your motion?
What was stated here, just adding that we will, for future funding coming in, that we would, we would, we would create a process for allocating funds to outside agencies with any future funds coming in.
Okay.
So it's state the motion as it is, and that a process would be created. That way, we can't say, at the 11th hour, that we don't have time, we didn't know, we want to infiltrate it right away. Now we have a process.
All right, do you want to, like, have any details on what process you would like?
I think that's the council's decision. I don't want to pick the process. I think, we talked about that, remember the meeting we had a while back, that we were going to start a process, that would be the same thing that was discussed at future meetings.
Without direction, then the resolution will say, with basically no further funds to be expended until a process determining, yeah, blah, 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 will it be in place? So it'll be a filler, just say we won't spend anything else until there's a process.
And that would, we'd have time now, because we would be infiltrating our community, one in our town, and we could be now creating a process for the other funds whenever they come in. We can start now. I'd love to sit on that committee or group.
Point of information?
Yep.
So would this process be on the original motion, the Counselor Franco's motion?
No. I mean, she would have to make another motion, and it'd have to be seconded.
But it would be that original amount?
To amend it.
That original amount and a process?
Correct, right, right.
How many motions are on the floor right now?
Right now, there's only one.
Well, two if you include that.
Yeah, I made the motion to have that amended on the end.
Okay, who's your second?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can we just clarify, so this is the 22,000 and a process, is that what your motion is?
So that we don't sit here at the 11th hour without a process again.
Okay, thank you. Clarified.
Okay, so moved by Bordelon, seconded by Baumgartner. I sort of, okay, I'll just speak on, I sort of just feel like we should just set up the, if we're going to make a motion that we're going to do something, I think we should describe what that is. There was, like, I, when we, when I originally heard we were getting a settlement, I wanted to support creating a group that people could serve on to sort of make decisions on how to allocate these funds. When I see this 22,000, it's not, it's not really enough money to create a whole group and ask them their opinion on how to best expend those funds. It's, it's, it's just not enough. So from my, from my perspective, I think the motion should read, it should describe that a group will be made who will advise on how, on how the money should be spent. I mean, this is sort of just open, it's too open. I mean, we could make a gentleman's agreement to do this anyway without, without this, this motion, so...
Point, we made that agreement beforehand, and now we just eliminated it. It wasn't contingent upon the number. It wasn't a contingent, the group that we decided and we spoke about...
Point of order.
Was not contingent upon what the amount that came in.
She wasn't recognized to have the floor.
Well, he was looking at me, talking to me, and so the number that we agreed upon was never in there.
My point of order has been recognized.
Counselor Bordelon, you were not recognized. Counselor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am not in favor of this motion, simply, first of all, I don't know what, exactly what the motion is, and if what the Town Manager had stated, if that was accepted into the motion or not. But I'm not in favor of holding up any funds in the future until we can have some kind of process in place and have all these people interviewed. I mean, it's 22,000. In all reality, we should be getting million, a million, over a million dollars. Now, that's something you can create a group over, where you're really going to dig into this, and you're going to, you're going to find the best uses, but it's $22,000. It's sad. And honestly, our local group, Community Speaks Out, will utilize this money the best, and what other, what other agency are we going to send to? I mean, my, my personal opinion is, don't give it to an agency that's already funded by the state of Connecticut. So where is our local nonprofit in the community? You know? And Community Speaks Out, when I hear some other groups mention, like, the group at the, at the school, Community Speaks Out works with them. They help them. They're already doing that. They're working with them. They're in schools. They're working with groups in the schools. So it's not a lot of money to honestly, I'm surprised we're having such an in-depth debate over this, over $22,000. That's basically being given to us to help people with an opioid crisis. And this group right here has proven themselves, and we all know who this group is, and we know of great things that they do for our community. I mean, there's, I don't know of any other group in our community that is well-known in our community, that if somebody has a problem, that that won't be the first place you call, that that's not the first place you think of and that you call. So I'm not in favor of whatever the amended motion was, and that if it withholds any kind of money, if it comes to us again, let's just say it comes next month, and we haven't put the group together, I'm not in favor of holding back any kind of funding for, we would make a decision, I think we should make a decision right away on that as well, unless it's some giant money, like a million dollars. Then I can see us doing a group, but I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of this motion either. Thank you.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to agree with Counselor Franco on that. I do not mean to go off agenda item, but I did write a referral basically suggesting doing an opioid educational program. And part of that referral that I made was bringing in all of our local agencies and having them at the table, and I think that is the perfect time to sit down with them and say, what do you need? What would you need from this opioid money? And I do agree with Counselor Franco, we don't want to hold up any funding that could go out into our community to help this crisis. I think this council always does their due diligence when it comes to issues. I think that no matter what money comes before us, we are always going to try and make the best decision, especially for our residents, especially for our residents in need who have addiction issues. So I think the, the newest motion is kind of a moot point, because I think we're always going to do our due diligence. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
It's not holding up the money. If we can word it any way you want, just establish a process. I was leaving it open-ended. When this first came before us from Councilor Melendez, he didn't say, if it comes in under $50,000, we won't form a group. There was no money marked on that. It was, we would form a group to discuss, so I was just adding that on there, supporting the 22, but any future money that comes in, let's just have a process. So like, the next group that we're going to fund, how do we bring them before the council? A random counselor just says a name, and we all say aye? How do we get the other agencies? Or is all the money that comes in next going to Community Speaks Out? It doesn't have to be a roundtable discussion, it doesn't have to be a group. If you think it should be a group, we can do a group like you originally stated, but what is our process when the next amount of money comes in? We've had a whole year, and we've done nothing with the process. So now here we are, and so it's not that we're sitting on the money, we had the time to establish a process, and we didn't. So I'm just simply asking on the end of that amendment, just saying that we will then interview three other, you know, nonprofit, you know, community agencies that work with opioid addiction, or it could be whatever, but at least we're establishing something. Putting $22,000 out is a little amount, I agree, but that would infiltrate right away, and as soon as the other money comes, then we can do the work that we need to do on the back end. That's all I was simply stating, and supporting the 22,000 as stated, that folks want to move forward with Community Speaks Out. But we had a year, and it seems as if maybe everyone had their mind made up on what agency they were going to pick from the beginning then. I was not aware of any caucuses or anything where that was discussed or brought up.
Point of order.
So it's, we haven't had the chance, we haven't had the chance to...
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
We have a counselor questioning other counselors' motives. That is strictly mentioned in Robert's Rules of Order. Thank you.
Okay, I ask that counselors do not...
I'm not saying motives. I said that I have not attended...
Point of order.
I'm making the ruling on the point of order. I ask that counselors do not call into question other counselors' motives.
Thank you. I did not call on other counselors' motives, I simply said that I did not attend any caucuses, so we haven't had any talk on any communities that we were going to fund this money to. So just to bring up a name tonight and push it through without any other process is just, we're not doing our due diligence. That's all I'm saying. But it seems like the mind is made up tonight, and so it seems like you got your numbers. So I do think if you want to do what you said, a gentleman shake or whatever you called it, and make sure that, how would you like to word that then? How do we word it then tonight, that we walk away with your original plan, that you had stated that there'd be a group and a discussion that would be formed to allocate the funds? So I refer to you because you, you know, brought this before us.
I'm going, I'm going to support Counselor Franco's amendment, but I think, a motion, but I think what people are being hung up on is, is saying that we won't expend funds until we do A, B, C, D.
Never said that.
And I think that people are taking this to be pressing matter, where we need to, when we get the money, we need to expend it, particularly if it's an amount of money where putting a group together to allocate the different... the different amounts of funds, it's not really enough money to put... Like, if we come with the other, if the other settlement comes in, it's $22,000 and we're getting, it's not really...
So I should come and say, this group, and you all say, pay per say aye? With no interview, no nothing?
If you wish.
I mean, that's not appropriate.
I mean, I think, I think, I think you're implying, 'cause you said that counselors didn't do their due diligence. I would just disagree.
I feel as a council, we did not publicly announce our...
Many counselors went to Recovery Fest. We spoke to many different organizations. I see over half the council was there with me. I know those counselors did their due diligence. Counselor Parker, you have the floor.
Are you questioning my motive?
No, I'm simply stating, I'm simply stating that the council, from what I've directly seen, did their due diligence on this matter.
And I do it in my daily, I don't have to go to a convention, I'm involved in these activities.
Counselor Parker, you have the floor.
Point of order.
Counselor Parker, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping you keep in track of how many... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You know what, I'll text it. Okay. Question is, can you please reread the amended motion? Because I'm not confused. And two, I'm hoping you're marking down how many times each person has spoken on the amendment?
Right, I am.
And make sure that we're only going two times, because the third time would be a vote? Thank you.
Yep, I'm keeping track. It, and just to note, every time there's amendment, it's two more rounds. And Counselor Bordelone can correct me if I'm wrong, but her motion was the original motion and then something to the effect of...
To establish a process prior to any further expenditure of opioid settlement funds?
Did you get that? Counselor Parker, did I...
Does include the 22,000 going to Community Speaks Out with future funds being discussed, amended, further processed?
I believe, I believe it's that we wouldn't expend any other funds until a process is established. The process is not described in the motion.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you. Counselors, I think at this point, we're talking past each other. If we all just take a pause and listen to one another, I think we'll find that there is a lot more common ground than not. And I can only speak for myself, but if we approve 22,000 to go to Community Speaks, absolutely, I think our community will be well-served. That goes without saying. I think the points that Counselor Bordelone had brought up are nauseam, as did Counselor McBride, just talking about creating a framework or a process by which, whether it's Community Speaks Out or any other organization, even internally within our town government, can make the case as to how funds can be directly expended to make a direct impact on our community in terms of programming, in terms of direct services. I can't tell you what that looks like because I'm not an expert in recovery. I'm not an expert in addiction services. I certainly know organizations such as Community Speaks Out that has done the work on the ground. I know organizations such as GASP that does advocacy on that front. I can point to, you know, clinicians and other, you know, folks within our community who are doing, you know, actual, you know, the healthcare piece of things. But I cannot make that determination. So when I'm talking about the process, that's what I mean. So that as a council, we can get a better understanding about how those dollars can be most impactful on the ground. We didn't hear any presentation today as, in terms of what that work would look like. So that's why I had made the point initially about, you know, talking about process. But if we were to approve 100% tonight, yes, I think our community will be well-served. But I don't think we should be so quick to dismiss others who have brought up the process question. I think there's a lot of validity in it. I think Counselor Bordelone's motion, I think, was much akin to what Counselor McBride had initially proposed at that 20%, 25% level. And maybe she didn't quite articulate what he was trying to say, but the way I interpreted what she was trying to do seemed eerily similar to what McBride had proposed at that 25%. Is that correct, Counselor Bordelone?
Yeah, that would be correct. Just pushing the money forward, as the numbers are here, obviously, and we were just establishing a process on the back end that we can start immediately. So when the next set of funds come in, we are ready to handle it. Since this time, we didn't have the process that was originally sent by the mayor. No matter what the dollar amount is, we should have a process.
So, and Counselor McBride, and if you can quickly sum up my time. I'm gonna ask a question to Counselor McBride. In your initial motion, can you, was that in your eye what you had proposed?
Yes, however, I don't think, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with this particular motion 'cause I was, I think it may confine us a little too tightly. I agree, a process needs to be developed. I think it could be at the town manager or the mayor's prerogative to move forward per proposal, your reference, move that forward or set up a committee. You know, I think it can be done without tying our hands as this motion may do, I think. But I do think a process is needed. I just don't think I would support this motion because it ties our hands to a future. But I think we should develop a process. So I don't know if that helps.
It does help. And so maybe that, what you said will lead to the work you're doing in terms of your referral. I just think we're all on the same page here. You know, this is, at the end of the day, this is not about us. This is about our community facing addiction. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay, so we have had two rounds of speaking on this particular amendment. I have other counselors wishing to speak, oh, Counsel Westphal, you speak?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay, I do recognize that we do need to get money out there and get it rolling. However, I think that the taxpayers in the town want to know that we are being, are doing our due diligence and thinking things through instead of randomly picking somebody, giving them money and then not having...
What's your point of order?
Motive of other counselors randomly picking.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I'll just, I'll just state one more time. Just, please do not, counselors, try to describe the due diligence or the work that other counselors did in coming to their decisions. That's, I'll leave it at that. Counselors, they do their work. Not all their work is done here, right now. As, you know, in the public view, people go out and they do their due diligence. Counsel Westphal, you have the floor.
I apologize, I was not trying to disparage anyone in that, my choice of words, however they were. We came here tonight to do this, this is one of the items that we're looking at. I just think it, my personal opinion is it would best suit the Town of Groton if we talked about it and met with other groups that could possibly have a reason for this money as well. I just don't think that giving the money, choose my words carefully, I don't mean randomly, but just giving the money without any kind of due diligence, without any input from other groups that might be able to use that money or other people's comments on where this money is gonna go, I just don't think that we are doing a process for the Town of Groton by not doing that.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Is us discussing this whole situation and Community Speaks Out here a process? Isn't all of us sitting here at a table discussing this a process?
Your point's well taken. Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands for discussion. Counsel Westphal, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other...
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
So if my motion fails, as it sounds like it may, is there an agreement that you're gonna start a process of sorts internally? Or what are we gonna walk away with here?
I think that should be a vote.
Okay. We're gonna vote on Counsel Bordelone's motion. If that fails, we will vote on Counsel Franco's motion. That's all we're doing here tonight. So...
So you're not doing the gentleman's agreement that you stated before? That we would have a, you would just, you know, develop a process?
That's not a formal...
Point of order.
Yes, what's your point of order?
Counselor hasn't been recognized to have the floor yet.
Okay. That would not be a formal vote. Okay, we're gonna vote on Counsel Bordelone's motion right now. It's the original motion plus establishing a process before we expend any other funds. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I have Bordelone, Baumgartner, Westphal. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. I have three in favor, Bordelone, Baumgartner, Westphal, six opposed and zero abstaining. Onto Counsel Franco's motion, which is the original motion in the packet, entering in Community Speaks Out. In the blank, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that McBride?
Yes.
Bordelone, Westphal? Okay. And no abstentions. Pass the six in favor, three opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. Okay, so I'll ask consensus for the council to move back up to ordinance to establish parpy tax abatement for surviving spouses on page 36. See, one, two. Okay, I have consensus. And I welcome up Moderator Rusk.
Can we just take a quick five-minute break?
Yes. We'll be back at 9:18. Yes, we'll be back at nine eighteen. Thank you, Moderator Rusk. Okay, so we're back from recess at nine twenty-two. Onto page thirty-six. And we have Town Manager Burt and Moderator Rusk here to do some background.
As you know, the town council had approved a ordinance to establish a property tax abatement for surviving spouses of fallen emergency workers. That was forwarded to the RTM. It first went to the Finance Committee, who did recommend unanimously to veto it to the council, or to the RTM. And then at the RTM, it was vetoed, which, just to mention, that takes a two-third vote, so to get that many votes. Some of the reasons that were mentioned that I've heard include some not wanting the benefits to go to federal employees at the subbase, some that the abatement was set too high at a hundred percent, some that they thought it should include volunteers, and not just paid staff. And then the last, the ability to... They questioned the ability, if you were currently as it's written, if you were to remarry, but then let's say divorced again, you could reapply for those earlier benefits. And so there was some that had an issue with that.
Thank you, Moderator Rusk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say thank you for your patience on me getting here tonight. I did have a prior meeting. What Town Manager Burt said was accurate. The motion, or the ordinance was vetoed twenty-four to five to one. Some of the other concerns were what benefits do police and firefighters and EMTs receive from, well especially firefighters and police, from their municipality? How many firefighters, police officers, EMTs live in the town if, God forbid, there was a big tragedy? What type of burden would this place on the taxpayers? There was a concern about unions, how this would affect unions across the board for town employees, especially in fields that were considered dangerous, such as, like, linemen got brought up for the city of Groton. And what about veterans if you're going to... Or what about active duty, I guess it would be more entailed? If you're going to give benefits to firefighters and EMTs and police officers on the base, do you also include members that are active duty? So if you're gonna pay one federal employee, are you gonna pay the other federal employee's spouse? Or widow? So, big concern about burden on taxpayers was probably one of the main things. And the cap, and definitely the getting married and then divorced, and then getting it again. So, if you've got any questions, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll open up for the council to speak. We also have Ms. Snyder here, who will be a beneficiary of the ordinance if it does pass, to take questions for you. Would you like to make a statement first?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for having me, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for considering the bill, which I handed everyone a page of. Bill five eight-eight-five. When my husband, Bill Snyder, as a police officer, was killed in the line of duty, his name was engraved on the wall in Washington, DC, and the Connecticut State Police Academy up in Meriden. At that time, I didn't just lose my husband, my children lost their father. I also had to learn things that I never had to. I had to contact plumbers, electricians, car servicing. I then became very active in supporting the line of duty police officers' families, which allowed... Which allowed me to see firsthand how other New England states have already had this law into effect since the eighties. This is just asking you to accept that law as is. It doesn't have EMTs, federal, or anything else. When I was up in Hartford to get that law passed, at one point, other people came in and said, "Let's put teachers on it, let's put this on it." At that point, they said, "If you want to put them on it, you submit a bill of your own, just like Mrs. Snyder is." And so at that point, the bill was approved in two thousand with police and firemen only. That's what I'm asking you to accept.
Just, the law doesn't include EMTs right now, the way the law...
No, it does not.
I've got a copy of it, yes.
Oh, because I have a copy of it, too.
It says emergency medical technicians in it. Do you have a copy?
Yes, I do have one.
All right, while we look for that, do councilors have questions? Counselor Bordelon?
So, I totally support this bill. The only thing I had added was I had brought up at the council, like, you know, I know if someone marries or divorces, and that part didn't get put in. So I can understand that question from the RTM side, but the part that I added was there are civilian folks that live in the town of Groton, that work at the fire department on base, as well as the police department, and they serve hand in hand. They, when there was a fire in my neighborhood, where the house almost burnt all the way completely down, it's actually being rebuilt three doors down from me, on Jefferson, the second fire truck that showed up was subbase fire. Those men and women live in our town, they're civilian, and they support the community. And so if any of those police officers, also there's a police officer in my neighborhood who is a civilian cop on the base, who has a wife and child in my neighborhood, they should be just treated just the same as residents working in the same capacity. I think that's a simple amendment, and when you really break it down to brass taxes, it's really not going to account for a ton of people, because this is not something that happens every day, thank God. And so adding, my simple amendment was adding the civilian officers on the base that protect us from terrorist attacks. They protect the river. When someone's drowning, you know, those rescue folks are there. When there's a fire, the subbase fire department is a responder to my neighborhood. I know that. And these men and women live in our town, and they should be under the same protection as town police, town EMTs, and town fire.
May I respond?
I'm not in charge of the meeting, so that's my comment.
Was that your question, Turner?
That's, oh, if you, sure.
Yeah, my husband, before he became a police officer, where, we knew each other since we grew up together, he was a volunteer fireman. I totally understand what you're saying, and they should submit the bill, just like I did.
But my understanding is that the bill, it's an entirety, so you're proposing that it be only passed for police today?
No, it says firemen and police, does it say EMTs on yet?
This one doesn't, but I've got a copy of one that does, so I want to see what's going on with that, I'm having trouble finding it earlier.
We don't know? So we don't know, so possibly EMTs as well? So, right, so that would be the same, police and firemen for civilian?
Just like getting names on the law.
I've got it here, it's slightly minifernant, but this shows that it is passed also.
Yes.
Oh, they did put the EMTs in?
Yeah, they put the EMTs in there, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I was just adding that the civilian, maybe, police and fire, they don't need to submit their own bill, they live in the town of Groton. They fall under the same umbrella.
Well, you know, I live, and I had to submit this bill up in Hartford myself, for them to accept it, so...
I can respect that, I just think that if we're saying as a generalization, police and fire, police and fire, or anyone that resides in the town of Groton and working in the boundaries, should have the same, you know, accommodation, so...
And then that would probably break the bank if something happened.
Thank you. Counselor Cassieri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I struggled with how to approach this ordinance getting vetoed, and I just want to start out by stating that I wholeheartedly respect our RTM and their viewpoints immensely. I understand as the fiscal arm of our government that they are looking out for our taxpayers, but I feel like the point of this ordinance was somewhat misunderstood. I don't think anyone in this council, I don't want to speak on behalf of others, is trying to say that officers, firefighters, or EMTs' lives mean more than anyone else's in our town, because I know I certainly don't believe that. I certainly understand that all of our town employees, our small businesses and their employees, all of our residents who go out into the working world every day and keep this economy functioning are essential, vital members of our community. What I think what was missed was that the state of Connecticut has allowed us to grant this particular abatement for the surviving spouses of these particular groups of people because of the continuous sacrifice that these families make for our communities. I already gave a whole speech on the sacrifice, so I won't go over it again. But it isn't the compensation of a single sacrifice. The sacrifice occurs over and over every day. I would also like to remind the public of the statistics that I brought up the first time we discussed this proposed ordinance. Since Officer Snyder was killed in the line of duty, point seven-one-four officers, less than one a year, have been killed in the line of duty in the state of Connecticut. In the entire history of line of duty deaths in the state, only one has been here in Groton, Officer Snyder. There has only been one line of duty death in Groton in the past twenty-eight years. The probability of this abatement occurring again is even smaller, as the family in question needs to actually not only work here, but live here. I do concur with the RTM that adding federal employees to the ordinance complicates this, as I don't have stats, and I do have stats for municipal or state line of duty deaths. And I also cannot speak to the stats of volunteers. There is a known difficulty of finding quality officers to hire right now. Having a tax abatement like this will set us apart from other departments, and could potentially bring officers not only to work here, but to live here. This isn't about one person potentially receiving this benefit. This is about ensuring our officers that their families will be protected if something happens to them. I would also like to remind everyone watching this, that this is the abatement of taxes for the death of an officer in the line of duty. These are individuals who serve our community every day and who make the ultimate sacrifice. I assure you that if this were going to be a burden to the taxpayer, I would be much more scrupulous about any added burdens to our residents, but this is a statistically minimal benefit to a potential family in our community who is already sacrificing every day. I think we need to be very cautious about quantitatively comparing certain groups to others as more deserving. As legislators of our town, we have the ability through state statute to offer the small compensation to offset the loss of life. If we have the power to do so with little impact, why wouldn't we do so? And so with that, I still understand the concerns of the RTM, and I want to respect their concerns and questions, and how they represent the fiscal arm of this community. So I will make a motion. I move to amend the ordinance to a fifty percent tax abatement, with the removal of the language for the federal officer striking the line, or a civilian police officer or firefighter employed by the naval submarine base New London from the first paragraph, and striking the section of this document that states you can reapply if you have divorced since remarrying. I so move.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Cassieri, seconded by Jones.
And just to mention, if you're gonna have to have any significant change, you'll have to have another public hearing, so if you do want to pass something tonight, you might want to include a date, you know, to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. Point of exclamation? Where was this, in your motion, where is the second section you're striking?
I'm sorry?
Where was the second, the section?
Oh, I didn't name the section, I'm sorry. It's the section that states that if they... If such surviving spouse remarries, the abatement shall cease commencing, is in section G. I don't see where it says that they can reapply, though.
Our attorney's opinion was, since it's not prohibited, they wouldn't be able to. They could reapply as it's written currently. So you'd want to put something in if you don't want it to?
Right, that's what I stated in my motion, I just didn't specifically state where it came from.
I think, I think it's that it's not in here. That's why they can, so we have to add something.
Oh, okay. All right. I will specifically state that you cannot reapply once you have remarried. Does that suffice? And what would you recommend for the public hearing date?
The August second.
And setting a public hearing for August second.
Okay. Counselor Jones, you're still seconding this motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it, or are you good?
I think, I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Counselor Beaumgardner?
Yes. I was able to listen in a little bit on, to the RTM meeting. Obviously, that was, a significant number of RTM members did oppose the resolution, or vetoed the resolution. Just a couple thoughts, kind of going through the reasoning. I'll just state whether I agree or disagree, starting with the federal benefit, or the federal employees at the subbase. Again, one of the few paid fire departments in the town of Groton, as you're keenly aware, just by virtue of your municipal service, you know, will respond to mutual aid calls, especially if there are actual fires. And in the case, you know, they do respond and something runs afoul, many of those firefighters do live here in the town of Groton, and in my opinion, should absolutely be entitled to a benefit, just as much as any other first responder would, whether it be in the police department or an EMT. So I very much believe they ought to be included, because they are no less of a first responder than any other firefighter in our town.
Point of clarification? I'm sorry, are you saying that volunteers should be included?
Yes. I was getting to that. Volunteer firefighters absolutely ought to be included as well. I think that was, excuse me?
Sorry, I just had a point of information. I believe that the statute does not apply to volunteers, I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted clarification. I'm sorry?
There's nothing that would prohibit it.
Exactly, because it is prohibited, it's not prohibited. And if, I implore you to review the Office of Legislative Research, they've done a write-up on this ordinance as well. So, if I can continue. The abatement at one hundred percent, it being too high, I think I would stand with Counselor Cassieri, that, I don't think, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but you can't put a dollar amount on the loss of life. So I do believe that should stand, but I'd be willing to compromise. Madam Moderator, was there a number that, in your conversation with RTM members, that they identified would be ideal?
They did not. And again, just for clarification, these are not my concerns, these were RTM concerns in general. There was a discussion at different times, whether it was at the meeting or not, about whether it was a fifty percent tax abatement. It just was too much in their minds to say unlimited amounts for an unlimited time. That was the concern. I think there was a lot of support in gen... There was support in general for the concept, there was a lot of concerns about the additional, additional points, such as like the divorce and remarried, such as the fact that volunteers were not included, the federal employees, things like that.
Excellent. On the latter point you made, I agree, use it or lose it. You know, I think we can all agree, if someone does remarry at that point, that abatement should not be, you know, that, the recipient of that abatement shouldn't be able to reapply for it. So, I would be okay doing away with it, but I do feel very strongly that we ought to explicitly include those volunteers in the ordinance, as well as keep the language regarding the federal employees, whether it be firefighters or police officers. As, in terms of the percentage, that's really up to the council, but I think whatever, as a group, we can agree on, I'd be happy to support that number. So, if we can do that before we vote on Counselor Cassieri's motion, I think that would be beneficial, I think, to the final outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First, I believe, as previously stated, is something else. Police officers do not pay into a... Police officers do not pay into Social Security, so when those benefits of someone dies, surviving spouse or family members gets that money, there are no Social Security benefits to provide for the family. Hence why there's an abatement, in my head, from, understanding from where I work, how it goes. Two, federal employees, we need to check and make sure they don't receive something special on their end. That's why I was hesitant on putting that into the, because the policies of a federal government are different than a municipality. I can agree with some terms, but the volunteers, are they working for a municipality or working for an individual fire department? Because they should be covered under something special. This is talking about municipalities. I believe that's what is, how it was set up. So if you guys can point out where, and I've read it several times, where, first, it says federal government, because this came down from this.
Counselor Parker, we're having difficulty hearing you. Are you asking where in, in the, in the act, volunteers?
Original. In, in the original, not what we've established, because we added the military after the fact, or I should say, subbase, that was originally there. I have concerns about adding federal employees working for subbase onto this plan that is not part of the state. So we're going above the state to hit federal employees. I don't agree with that. Volunteers, I believe it says municipalities. So if there's a fire, volunteer fire department, does that mean the town of Groton covers them? Because I don't think we cover that. So if someone can ask, answer those questions, I'll be more than happy to consider what was being stated. But where's our legal obligation to the family if they're not working for a municipality? So I can see going in some way, different.
Okay, so.
And I'm okay with the 50%. Go ahead.
So let me, I'm having a little difficulty hearing you. So you want to know whether volunteers can be covered under this if they're not volunteering specifically for the town and they're, they're volunteering towards a fire department and also the, the federal, you want to know if the federal firefighters, police officers can be covered because this is for the state? Is that what you're asking?
No. What I stated was not covered per the state statute. So how are we supposed to put federal employees onto our ordinance, even if they live in the city? I believe the federal government may cover them if they have to them. So if we can check that, to see what the federal government does, then it's a mute issue. We shouldn't be covering them. It should be under the federal government to cover their employees.
Okay.
We're looking at, we should be looking at this from a municipality standpoint.
Okay.
I'll just.
Volunteers are not working for the municipality.
It's not written to require them to work for the municipality because the town council has the authority over taxation, tax collection. It's just, the reason it says municipality is because you set the rules. It doesn't mean that they have to work for the municipality. Our attorneys have already looked at this. It can, if you're, if you're a certified, you know, police officer, firefighter, EMT that, that works, or that works in town and lives in town to get that benefit, then you're eligible, including the subbase, if you wanted them to. We've already looked at it.
I don't agree with, I don't agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you. I just, I'm sort of echoing what Counselor Parker has saying, even if you just read this on page 37, you just read, I'll just focus on the firefighter. It says duly-employed member of a state or municipal fire department or civilian firefighter. I mean, we, I'm wondering, so I have two, two things here. One is, in Counselor Cassieri's motion, there may be other places in here that we need to take things out, like in the firefighter, it says naval subbase based in New London on page 37. Under police officer, we have, employed by naval subbase New London. So if we are not putting in federal employees, we need to take it out of those sections also. So I think we're, we've missed that in, in the original motion. But I think going along with what Counselor Parker's saying and what I remember from when we were looking at this, this is a state bill to support state of Connecticut employees, firefighters, policemen, and EMTs. And we're kind of broadening this out, and so I think we need to stay in the spirit of this original state bill. We're just piggybacking on that state bill. So we really don't have authority to broaden this at all. And I think this is pretty clear that, yes, we feel for the naval and the federal employees and the military police that they have a right to have benefits, but this bill wasn't written for them. And this is written just for state of Connecticut municipal employee, fire, and police, so.
It's not written for municipal, just like EMTs are municipal. If you live in the town and you are certified in those categories, the law allows it. We've, we've had the attorneys look at it, it's just what do you want to do? So if they're certified and live in the town, you can allow it.
So we can expand the scope?
That doesn't expand the scope. The way it's written includes that, allows that.
Does it include federal employees?
It doesn't prohibit any kind of employee, it doesn't say. It just says you have to be certified, EMT, firefighter, police officer.
Does it, does it, because it does say you're a duly-employed member of a state or municipal fire department.
That's what we wrote, that's not the law.
That's not the law.
You're looking at what we wrote.
So does that cover volunteers?
Can I read you the actual law? It's very short. The legislative body of any municipality may establish by ordinance a program to abate all or a portion of the property taxes due with respect to real property owned and occupied as the principal residence of the surviving spouse of a police officer, firefighter, firefighter, or emergency medical technician who dies while in the performance of such officer's, firefighter's, or technician's duties. It doesn't limit who they work for, just means if you're in the town and you have property there, because obviously you did have property there, if you're working within the bound, you can actually technically let them work somewhere else and just have property here, but we never went there, but you could. It's not restrictive. I'm not saying anything, what should be, I'm just saying it's, it's very simple language.
So just a quick question for the moderator. Was the federal employees being included part of the reason for the veto?
That was a concern noted by some.
And I did have several members say that to me.
Okay, so I think, to Counselor Jones' point, just come for me, I think whether we feel it should be included, I think the RTM has the final say on this, so perhaps it should not be included or else it'll get vetoed again. Okay.
Just, so my, my, my last question is, should the motion be amended? If we're going to decide to take out federal employees, should that motion be amended to the other places in here that have federal employees?
May I? I said the removal of the language for the federal officers, and then I included striking the line or a civilian police officer, so is that?
It was federal and civilians is what I had written down. Federal or civilians at subbase.
Thought it kind of blanket-covered all of those.
For every place that it falls in this agreement.
Yeah, my preference is to strike any reference to, you know, that's, you know, rather than try to pinpoint each one, just in case. Generally, you know, if it's in the spirit of the, of the motion, we're allowed to, you know, tweak things ourselves as staff, you know, because if, if it's the intent, it's just obvious that the motion didn't say it quite right.
I just didn't want to mistake, you took it out of one place and didn't take it out of the other.
That was my intent.
Yeah, we always go through and look.
I'm good.
Okay. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So my thought is, we can include or exclude whatever we would like. This passed overwhelmingly through the town council and went off to the RTM, and then it was overwhelmingly defeated. So although we do have our own personal reasons for what we do or do not want in there, we also have to consider what will the RTM potentially pass and what do they have a capacity to take care of? So I think, I, there's a few things, I'm not sure exactly how I feel, like the volunteers, I don't know how I feel about that. I don't know, the federal, the civilians, I understand the reasoning for them wanting to take that out. I'm in favor of reapplying after marriage and divorce, go with the public hearing. One of the things I do have an issue over is, from what people are saying from RTM that I've, I've heard, some are saying that the 100%, 100% is too much and that even some people would like to have like a maximum threshold, a max, like it might be 50% or a maximum of so much. Because maybe what I pay in taxes is much different than somebody else who lives somewhere else. So it, it benefits 50% depending on how, your wealth. So maybe we could also put 50% with a maximum and, and have a dollar amount on there. Just a suggestion, I'm not going to throw out a number right now, but something to just add to the conversation before we move forward.
Thank you.
May I add something?
Yes.
Thank you. So there was a, a discussion regarding like maybe a maximum of $5,000 or a maximum, the discussion of a percentage didn't come up, it just wasn't part of the discussion, but like a maximum number had been brought up.
Like potentially, like you're, as an example, just say $5,000 max or $4,000 max. I mean, I think that maybe, and then it's sort of fair to everybody and it's not a percentage based on how your wealth, shall I say, or, you know.
Thank you. Counselor Wardlon?
Yeah. Again, you know, on one hand, we're, we're the military capital of the, you know, of the, the sub school. Everybody that comes through here that's, ever steps foot on a submarine starts off in Groton in a sub school. We have to sign up. We tonight voted to make a name, rename something in, in honor of the upcoming Nautilus. And in the same breath, it feels as if we don't want to include them. We talked about how it might encourage people to want to live in Groton. A lot of retired military folks, my family, my husband's family's retired military, all Navy and reside in different towns all around Groton, and some choose to stay in Groton. Why do we want to exclude those folks? A lot of the military members who get off submarines that have trouble finding jobs look for federal jobs to stay in the area so their children can finish school, and they become police officers on that base and firefighters. Omitting them, to me, is, is, I don't understand why we would even do that. This is what our town has kind of built its backs on, and those police said fire respond, the fire respond to house calls. And they are part of our working tapestry of our town. Omitting them is, is really kind of, I feel, just kind of disenfranchising the relationship we have with that group of folks that serve our community. And they own houses here and chose to live in Groton. You know, they're, 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 they put their life in line every day out in front of the base, on the waterfront, fighting fire. They should just be fault. As far as the percent goes, I mean, I'm not, I, I could do 100 or 50. If you want to put a cap number on that, I can support whatever on that. My, my line item would be supporting our Navy folks and retirees or folks that actually move into this town and decide to work for the federal government and choose to live in the town of Groton. There's people that come here for that and to protect and to serve. So the amount of calls that the subbase responds to for fire, I, I mean, it's unbelievable. In some cases, more than our other stations. So I, I just think it would be very absent to not add them. As far as the widow, I can agree with, you know, once you're divorced, if you remarry, then that goes away, the percent, but my stake is supporting our military community. And if the, if the ordinance, as John stated, the mayor, manager, says it can be, why would one want to take that off? You can play with the other numbers, the 50, you can cap it at 5,000, that stuff doesn't bother me. But add the military personnel on that line, they deserve to be on there, too. Thank you.
I would say, I agree with, with Counselor Wardlon that they should be included in this ordinance, but my only thing is, we sent that to the RTM and they sent it back saying no, essentially. So I mean, they have, they, they have the final say on this, and I just think that in the interest of getting an ordinance passed, because I think everybody here wants an ordinance passed, I think we should listen to the representative town meeting and their advice and counsel on what they think should be in here.
A point of clarification?
What's your point of clarification?
I just want to make sure, I can respect that the moderators here, they shot down a whole bunch of things. We don't know that if we moved it down to 50% and then added the cap on the widowed person.
Okay, what's your question?
I was, I'm trying to speak, please let me speak.
Point of clarification is a question?
I'm asking a question.
What's the question?
I'm getting to the question, please give me the time.
Right.
We do not know if we keep the military personnel in there, but we add the 50% on the cap and we add, take out the, the person that can't remarry again, that they wouldn't accept it. We, we as a council don't know by taking one item out that it's all not going to go through. I don't think we're going to be tasked with that tonight. So my question is, how are we going to vet that?
Point of order.
That's, that's not really a point of clarification.
That's not a point of clarification.
My clarification is how are we going to vet which items stay or don't?
How each individual counselor chooses to do that, I, I, that's not really a clarifying question. Okay. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, Madam Moderator, how do you personally stand as the, I mean, you are the RTM moderator, the face of our RTM. What are your thoughts on specifically the military, naval personnel, civilian firefighters, and police officers being entitled to this abatement? Or their spouses being entitled to that abatement?
As the wife of a veteran, I 100% support our military. That being said, without knowing what benefits they already receive, that's a hard question to answer. So I'm here to let you know that that was one of the concerns voiced by the RTM. Perhaps if you're able to find out what they are able to receive as federal employees, that decision may change for them, but they were pretty strong regarding removing federal employees. So my personal opinion is really irrelevant because I am one vote out of 41 members, but...
Well, one critical vote, obviously, as the moderator.
I'm, I'm one vote.
And certainly as the moderator, a role, you know, a unique role in being able to kind of shape the narrative or shape the policy in kind of, it's like herding cats, obviously, a lot larger group than, than us nine counselors. So on, on big items like this, there's a lot of competing ideas and, and perspectives. And so it is hard to get a sense of kind of what the entire group is thinking because there is such a diversity of thoughts and opinions, which I think is what makes the RTM so special and unique. But as, again, the manager had mentioned, this is about specifically relief that can be provided to someone or a spouse in our community that very abruptly loses a loved one who happens to be either a firefighter, EMT, or, or police officer in the line of duty. And so that is a, an abatement that we can directly provide those residents on behalf of the town. So in my opinion, it doesn't really matter what the federal government is doing in terms of whatever relief or, or, you know, financial help they're providing, you know, a spouse of a fallen, you know, officer or firefighter. I know what we can do and we're within the law to do that. So in your eye, I mean, how is a majority of, can you convincingly state that a majority of the RTM is opposed to including that specific provision?
I wouldn't be able to tell you what percentage was opposed to that specifically. There was so much concern over lots of different issues here that you got a 24 to 5 to 1 vote. Federal employees was one of the main topics. The divorce and remarried was a main topic. The fact that this could be a concern, I mean, the, the question was, what would happen if, God forbid, we had... if God forbid we had a large incident that brought in everybody and there was a large number of deaths between our firefighters, our police and our EMTs? That would be a horrible event and none of us want to consider that ever happening. But if that happened, what happens to our taxpayers who are now picking up all of that 100% from now until that surviving spouse leaves? I'm not saying that this is not an important ordinance. I'm saying the RTM was concerned that this could impact the remaining taxpayers.
No, and I. Just one second. Manager Burt.
Just to point out, the surviving, the civilian sub base workers, the federal workers, wasn't included in the public hearing. It was added after, that day, brought up that day. The important, you know, anything you might want to have in there, you could have in there, get comment. And if you don't include it, you can't include it later. So if you include it for the public comment and see what comments are, you could always remove it. So, and by having it in there now, we get a chance to see what people think.
I would also suggest having numbers. I know there's under 10 police officers between the city, the town and Groton Lung Point who actually live in Groton. But how many firefighters, how many EMTs, how many federal employees that you're considering? What are the numbers? If it's 15 people, that might sway the RTM. If it's 100, that might sway the RTM. And it might sway your vote also. But something to consider. I don't think there were many people in the RTM who adamantly were opposed to this. I think there were a lot of nuances that concerned them.
I don't know how easy it would be to get the federal information on where they live. So I'm not sure if I can get that or not.
But perhaps if we can, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no.
But perhaps if we could get the death benefits, I mean, I could have told you, when my, when my husband was active duty, if my husband died in the active duty, it was $400,000. I know that as a military spouse. That might be.
Does it change my rank?
No. But then we also had life insurance separately. So, and I'm not, this isn't about me and it's not about my family. I'm just giving you a point of reference. My husband retired many years ago, though, so I don't know what the numbers are now and I don't know what civilians would get. But it's something that might be good to look at. What are the, the death benefits? And do they get social security? Because I know that was a, a point that Counselor Parker brought up. As a, as a federal employee, do you get social security if you're a police officer? That could be a big difference.
And I completely, I think that data and information is certainly relevant, but I can't say that is honestly factoring into my decision in large part because we have, again, parameters set by this legislation and we can either codify this state, you know, now state law into, you know, in our code of ordinances or not. And so I, I would feel more comfortable kind of having as broad of a scope as possible, include as many folks who are, could be, you know, in the line of duty, you know, and to provide relief to their spouses. So, you know, again, knowing how many people live here who also work, that number can fluctuate from here, you know, from this date, from, you know, to 10 years from now. This is an ordinance that will transcend just the next two years. It could, if we pass this ordinance, it could be on the books unchanged for 50, 100 years from now. So, but I think I've used my time and appreciate your answers and you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Just as Counsel Cessari said, we, I taught up a police academy for many years, line of duty, death to the officers. And we only lose in the average, one Connecticut police officer, municipality and state a year. And as far as firemen goes, it's a lot less than that. I agree with Counselor Jones. I think that it should stick with, as the bill is written. This is exactly what I dealt with up in Hartford when everyone came in and wanted to throw all the other, as they called it, fat on it, sorry to say. My husband was military. My husband was also volunteer fireman. Okay. So I understand where it's coming from. But that was the problem. And that's why it was so loosely written, was because everybody wanted to throw that back, all that stuff in it. And so they took out will and put may.
Thank you. Counsel Cessari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of going along the lines of what the moderator was saying. Part of our due diligence in doing something like this, and we all know how strongly I feel about this. I think I've made that very clear. We obviously want everyone to get the maximum benefit. But this is our fiscal responsibility. And I came here from the start wanting to support this ordinance because of how I feel about this. And so I went out and I researched, because, just because I was a police officer doesn't mean I knew about line of duty deaths, but I researched the police and fire line of duty deaths. So out of my fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer, I came with stats. So I was able to come and tell you that .714 deaths a year. I do not know how to tell the taxpayer about federal employees. And I also don't know how to tell the taxpayer about volunteers, especially when we're getting into really convoluted areas of, there are EMTs that are volunteers. I don't even know how to get that data. And so I, I'm finding it very hard to support something where I can't tell the taxpayer what the burden is going to be on them if something happens. Thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Madam Moderator, I just, in the background that we have on this, I just want to read this. It says, "The reasons that have been mentioned for the veto included complaints that the ordinance provided benefit to federal employees at the sub base. The abatement was set at 100% being too high, not including volunteers and the ability to apply for the abatement if you remarry and subsequently divorce." In your opinion, do you think these are really the main reasons for why they turned this down? Are you feeling comfortable with what's written here in the background?
I don't have the background. I'm sorry. Can I see your background?
The ones, basically the ones that was.
Okay. Those are the ones that were discussed. And I, like I said before, I don't think I can say which one tipped the scale for any one person. I think there were different issues for different people.
But sort of overall, you basically agree that these are the reasons that it got rejected.
Correct.
So if our, if our point here is to sort of pass this through and to bring it back to the RTM, it's nice, we all feel we want to add everybody that we can in here, you know, volunteers and federal employees and all these other people. But the reality is, it's all going to, it's going to fail completely if we put any of those people in here. If we listen to the reasons that are coming here, why they rejected it, work with those reasons, we can at least get the spirit of this pass. It'd be nice to add all those other people, but if it just fails again, then we didn't, we didn't do our job and we didn't get this done. So I, I think the motion that, you know, Counsel Cessari put forward, I think covered most of these and gave us at least a shot of maybe getting this to pass again. So I just think, for everybody to sort of pay, you know, think about that, that, you know, yes, it's nice to add everybody in, but if it doesn't pass, it was just a waste of time. So if we can, I think, put that.
I would say one representative specifically stated that they would not vote for this without adding volunteer firefighters. So I mean, I'm just giving you that information.
Gets more and more confusing.
Quickly, point of clarification for Manager Burt. Does the ordinance as written explicitly prevent volunteer firefighters from being included?
Yes.
And that's due to the definition that was written?
For our ordinance scraps.
Okay. So all it would take is change it, sorry, but change in the definition?
Yeah.
Okay. I was a little unclear on that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Jones.
Counsel Westerveld.
I was actually thinking along the lines of the volunteers as well, just wanting some clarification because it sounds like without the volunteers, that was a downside to what the RTM was thinking. And, I mean, we've got young kids who are volunteer fire department, are firemen. They came to my house, they put out a fire. And if one of them had died, you know, that would be, that would be horrible. So I think discounting or excluding volunteers from the fire department, I think that would be a negative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Counsel Cessari, just for clarification, which, what changes did you have from the original?
So I moved to amend it to 50%. I wanted to remove the language for the federal officers striking the line. Oh, I had put striking the line, but we'll just leave it as a broad with the removal of any language for the federal officers. Okay. And then I had added.
Language did not allow reapplying after divorce?
Yep. But I had actually found the language in the ordinance. It's in section G. It says, "If such surviving spouse remarries, the abatement shall cease, blah, blah, blah. In the event that such remarriage shall terminate, such surviving spouse may apply for the abatement commencing with taxes due on the October 1st grant list." So I wanted to strike that.
Okay.
So we could essentially strike all of section G.
Okay. So we have here 50%, no federal employees, can't reapply after marriage. And there was also the August 2nd.
The first line.
You might want to make it clear that they can't. I wouldn't want to leave it ambiguous, you know, with no direction on what happens if they divorce. If you don't want them to be able to reapply, would it actually happen there that you can't reapply?
Just state explicitly.
Okay. And plus section G, we got to keep the first line anyway. So I will specifically state that you cannot reapply for the abatement if you have divorced since remarrying. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then you also have the August 2nd date for the public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry. And the date of August 2nd.
Now, just a question for the moderator. Do you think there are any potential non-starters for the RTM that are not, have not been amended in Counsel Cessari's motion?
The only thing that I would say is that you have the emergency medical technicians defined as full or part-time. So if you want to include volunteers, that would need to be removed. Under firefighter, it says duly employed. That would be part that would need to be removed also.
So you're saying to include volunteers?
If, that was, I mean, that was.
In my, or in my motion, it does not have volunteers mentioned at all. So just want to clarify.
If you do, I would just keep it broad, you know, to allow it and we'll make the necessary changes.
Okay. And was there discussion on volunteers at the RTM?
There was.
And generally, was there any sort of consensus?
In general, it was one person who discussed it.
Okay.
Just to mention, it really is hard to get a handle on how many thought what on each item. You know, it's, I think as they each heard items from each other, like, oh, this isn't ready for primetime yet. We need to send this back. So it's really hard to have a gauge over what.
Point of clarification.
Other than I think the 100% was pretty, that was pretty definite.
Right. Right. What's your point of clarification?
There's really no time limit on this, right? I mean, it's not like the, would be, you know, money or any other thing that we're trying to get in a system. I mean, we could propose something, send it to the RTM, see what happens and have it come back. I mean, we're not on a, on a time.
There is no time limit.
October 1st, just if you were going to catch the next tax year.
Right. But we have time. So.
Okay.
I'd like to put an amendment on the floor as well.
Okay.
I make a motion to amend the ordinance to 50% abatement, eliminating the ability to reapply for like the spouses if they were to remarry, like was stated. Basically everything that's the same, adding volunteers, but also keeping the federal employees on there.
Second, Baumgartner.
Okay.
So I'm decreasing the number. I'm taking off the option for someone, a widow, to reapply if she remarries or he remarries, because I hope it's gender, it's not, you know, gender specific here. And adding the volunteers. And I think, again, as I stated, let's see what the RTM does with it. I mean, if they're not, but there's no rush. We, we don't have to decide it tonight. I think we tweak it a little bit. We give it back. This is good governance to have the RTM part of deliberation. So it should go back to them anyway. I don't think tonight, as it was stated by the town manager, it's one here, three there. As a whole, it was shot down. We don't know the exact percent of each thing and why. And we can, in the meantime, do some research. My understanding from what I read for federal employees, they do not get a tax abatement for the town that they live in on their property tax. I can agree with Moderator Russ, that yes, that $400,000 for active duty, but for federal employees, they don't fall under that 400. So this wouldn't be for the active duty member. This is for the federal civilian employee. And they were simply abating taxes. I agree with Counselor Baumgartner, where if they were going to give them $100,000 of life insurance or something like that, that widow would still be living in the town of Groton and we would have a chance to abate their taxes for them. That's all we're debating. We're just abating taxes for them while they live here. So if they got that in addition, that's wonderful. So I, I don't see the discrepancy here. And I, I think we could do some more research on it in the meantime as well. And I think this is something that changes a lot of the numbers at the RTM, but keeping in the federal employees and really explaining why. I think it also wasn't explained as well at the RTM, in my opinion, my opinion. You know, you know, as you read it there today, I think it should be restated that federal employees can be included. And when I rewatched the video, it didn't seem as if that was like as cut and dry as it could have been, as we clarified more here tonight. You know, as Counseler Jones stated, you know, oh, I don't think it could be part of it. And you said, yes, it can be. See, I think we need to like maybe put it back out there, maybe a different tone.
And it was, they were, they asked whether the attorneys had reviewed it. That means that if it's in there, it's reviewed and allowed. Yeah.
Right. And we, but counselors here still had questions that could the federal employees. So that makes you wonder if RTM maybe have the same thought. So we need to just maybe restate that. So that's my, thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear, you're, you have the original ordinance, the amendments you made are 50% rather than 100%, removing the reapply if you are divorced.
Correct.
And adding volunteers in.
Correct. And keeping the federal.
Yeah. Yeah. The federals is in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel McBride.
Thank you. I, I can totally agree and understand the RTM's concern because as, as I see it, it's totally financial exposure is what, what they're, what's driving. So I think, I support Portia's motion. But I also think there should be a number instead of the, up to 50%. There should be a number like up to, say, 3,500, which is a $250,000 assessed, $250,000 house, 70% assessed value, 20 mils, gets you about 3,500. So I think when and if this is approved, we should have a number in there so the RTM can see the financial exposure. I also completely agree that we should, we should not exclude any fire, police or EMTs. So I'm supporting Portia's motion. My concern is that I don't think we're ready to pass this tonight to send to the RTM because I think there's still due diligence that we need to have, that we've discussed recently in terms of what federal employees get and what others. So I still think this is, I don't think it's ready to go to the RTM in either way tonight. So I'm not going to support, I'm not going to vote in favor of either motion, but I, I align with Portia's motion because we should, I believe we should be including all individuals in those areas. But I think there's more information we need to, to provide. So I'm not, I will, I'll be upstanding for the vote tonight.
Two items. One, it wouldn't go to the RTM. This would just create a public hearing to discuss these possible changes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the hope would be, I'll reach out to different agencies before the public hearing. There's going to be agencies I won't hear back from, but I'll try my best. You know, it's really hard to get certain fire departments to reply to that type of thing, but I'll do what I can. The other thing is, in terms of total exposure, I'm not saying whether they should include it or not, but including volunteers will up the, drastically up the total exposure. So that might very well lose more people than you gained. But I'm not saying it shouldn't. I think it's fair. But just to point that out, it's going to be really hard to predict what the outcome will be. But like Counsel Board along said, it can also come back again.
Okay, good. All right.
I'd like to make an amended motion.
We have three right now because we have the original Cessari, Borlon. So just wait for one to fall off. Counsel Jones?
I just, my comment is to go back to trying to get something that will pass the RTM and looking at the RTM and on the current motion on the floor of adding federal employees, the very first subject mentioned in the reasons that they vetoed this was adding federal employees. So if the goal is to get this thing passed, we're not doing that by adding federal employees, which is the very first thing that they stuck, that they mentioned, that they done. that they don't like in this emotion. So it isn't necessarily what we like or we don't like, or who we think should be included. It's can we get something passed? And if we're going to go against exactly what they don't want and add it back in, we're not going anywhere. So I'll be supporting Counselor Casiri's motion on the floor, because I think my goal here is, let's get something passed that answers all the questions that they had, give it the best shot that it possibly can to, to kind of pass.
Counsel Frankel, let me correct myself. There is no main motion. There's only two motions on the floor.
Thank you.
So just to make it clear, what we're doing right now is not making it so that the RTM will pass it. It's to go to a public hearing and to get input, and then we can have further discussion about it. So if we leave federal employees in there, we could have the discussion again on it and with more information. Same with volunteers. What we are removing is divorce. Because when we do a public hearing, if it's not in there, we can't add it later. So this is just something to like, I would say, leave it there, and we can remove it when the time comes to move it off, if we want to move it off to the RTM. We can either remove it, leave it, we could decide then. But I would be in favor of leaving, honestly, the federal there, adding the volunteers, removing the divorce. And I'm going to make an amended motion to change the maximum amount of the abatement to a maximum of three thousand dollars.
I could second that.
Okay. So you are, let me get your motion. Are you doing the fifty percent, or are you just putting the max?
I'm just putting maximum of three thousand dollars.
So we have three thousand dollar max.
It's fifty percent up to three percent, right? Is that what, because you already have fifty percent. Is that...
Are you at a hundred percent, just capped at three thousand?
Yeah, I'm confused.
Like if you...
Me, I will do fifty percent with a max of three thousand.
Okay.
Point of clarification, what would that work out for property? I guess I looked at McBride, the numbers guy.
Well, I did two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that seventy percent assessed value would be one seventy-five, that twenty mils would be thirty-five hundred. That's a twenty mils.
So you'll either get, yeah, you could either get fifty percent with a maximum of three thousand. So if your taxes are twenty thousand a year, your maximum's going to be three thousand.
I'll keep my second, I think that's fair.
Okay. So let me get all your other ones. You said the no, can't reply after remarriage.
Remove that. Yeah, yeah. I don't want it to be where you could reply after divorce and remarriage.
Okay. And you wanted to add volunteers?
Leave volunteers in there, like, yes, with a plus next to volunteers. Federal and civilian leave in there. And we'll have the discussion.
Okay.
And have a, as well as the public hearing on August second.
Okay, so let me, so this is essentially Counselor Borlon's motion, you're just adding a nominal cap, would you say?
It's just the max, the maxed out of three thousand.
Point of information. So just want to understand what will happen on August second. If we, if we pass this or any of these that we pass, then this is sort of the piece that's presented, and people can talk on that at that time.
Everything that's in it.
Then we can take things out or do things in, depending what we learn from what people do.
Right.
Right, so that's where...
Another thing you can't do is, let's say something was not mentioned whatsoever during a public hearing, it wasn't in this draft, and then you think of it later, and it's a major thing, then you'd have to go back to a public hearing.
To add it.
So you need to mention it the night of the public hearing.
So after, then after we hear the response to public hearing, then we can go finalize that or make that adjustment, and then that's what goes to the RTM.
Right.
Right, right, yeah. Okay. Okay, so just to be clear, we have three motions on the floor. The first one we will be voting on is Counsel Frankel's.
I'll take mine off if you want, just don't have to go to it.
Well, that may not be necessary. We'll be at fifty pers, her, her motion is the original ordinance, but changing fifty percent, a hundred percent to fifty percent with a three thousand dollar nominal max. Taking out, if you get remarried and divorced, you cannot reapply. So once you remarried, you can no longer, you're no longer eligible. Adding volunteers in, and an August second public hearing date.
Correct.
All right.
And federal employees are in there, correct?
Yeah, but that's already in the...
It's already in.
Yeah, that's in the original. Okay. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carefree and Amnesty, nine in favor, zero opposed.
No, 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 sorry, sorry, I'm abstaining.
Okay. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Parker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you both. It is ten twenty-seven, so any consensus for the council to take on our last agenda item?
And just to mention, this, this, this is, we didn't get to Greg's one item last time, he waited the whole time.
He's here?
And he's been waiting the whole time here tonight.
Okay.
He's online, but...
Okay. Sure.
What's that?
10:36, on to page 58, Park Place, oh, I have to ask consensus from the council to continue our last agenda item, Park Place Right-of-Way Encroachment. Just a point, Director Hanover's here, he's waited the entire meeting for two meetings in a row. So, I personally think we should just take this last item up. Okay, I'm getting a lot of yeses, okay. Page 58, Park Place Right-of-Way Encroachment, there's no motion, but we have Director Han over here for some background.
And just to mention that this was a referral from Counselor Westervelt, and I think most of us are familiar with Park Place, there is a nice, there are a nice public access, there's not enough to really put a boat or anything in, but at the end of the street there, it's a nice view of the, of the shipyards there. And you'll see in the, in the materials there, there's, it's a very narrow street. It's very hard to get back out once you drive in. So, the request is to look at whether objects that are owned by residents there should be removed from our right-of-way to make it a little wider. Though even with that, just to point out, it's probably gonna be more like a five-point turn to get out. But Greg can give you any details.
Thank you. Director Hanover?
All right, good evening, sure, good evening, everybody. As John said, it's the very narrow street, the right-of-way width is only about 33 feet, which, you know, most normal roads are about 50-foot width in right-of-way. But the 33 feet is, you know, kind of typical for some of these historic roads in, like downtown Mystic, Noank area. The pavement width is about 16 to 17 feet wide, which again is very narrow. The utilities are along the east side of the road. There are some encroachments, like hedges, fences, nailboxes, you know, some shrubs, that type of thing within the right-of-way. They don't impede the pavement. But, you know, I can probably go to every road in the town of Grot and find these type of encroachments in the right-of-way. It's, it's really not unusual. You know, what is unusual, I guess, is the right-of-way, the road width, the pavement width, and the fact that there is no turnaround at the end of the road, as John stated, when you, when you get to the river. And, and people have to use private driveways to do kind of a three or five-point turn to get out. And, you know, the width of the, the right-of-way, 33 feet, just doesn't allow us to construct any type of hammerhead or cul-de-sac of any sort to, you know, allow people to turn around there. So, we're really kind of, our hands are really kind of tied with what we can do here. But there has been some concerns about, you know, some of the encroachments. So, we did go out there, we've done some survey work, there's a bunch of pictures in your packet. And we just kind of want to discuss and see, you know, what the council's pleasure is. We have, you know, kind of improved the coastal access a little bit, we've put a bench in there, put some signage up. That, that type of thing.
Thank you, Council Westervelt, do you have anything to add on your referral?
Director Hanover, was there not at one time at the end of that, almost a cul-de-sac? There seemed to be a, I seem to recall a drawing, much more dated than this one that you have here, that showed it wider there at the end?
Um, there may have been at one time, but it, it would have been, you know, on private property. The right-of-way itself definitely is, is straight all the way to the river, to where the little kayak launcher beach area is, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's really marshy now. But it, it, the road does, you know, the right-of-way does go straight there, it doesn't widen out there or anything else. But, you know, the right-of-way itself I'm talking about. But the pavement itself maybe at one time, you know, encroached under private property, that I don't know.
My understanding also was that there was an easement. If you're looking at this on the north, on the south side of number eight, Park Place, there was an easement that went through, out to the river. Is that, in fact, still there?
Um, I'm not aware of that, I can definitely do some research on that. So, went, went through number eight, you said?
South of number eight, Park Place.
Okay. Yeah, we, we'll definitely can do some research into that, see if that still exists.
And I guess my other comment would be, even with a five-point road turn, the hedging and the stonework, the lamp post or whatever at the end makes it even that much more difficult because that is actually in the town's right-of-way, correct?
That is correct, those items are in the right-of-way.
Okay. Which makes it difficult to access and difficult to turn around.
Yes, I mean, you know, that stuff, you would have to, you know, pave some type of a wider road at the end there so that people could do some kind of a, you know, like you said, five or six or seven-point turn, whatever it take to get out of there. But, you know, you could remove those items and widen it a little bit.
Thank you.
Council Borla?
Oh, thank you. I went down a week ago and, you know, I, I remember the spot as a kid, the bench wasn't there. It was a little bit more cleaned up. And we used to launch like rafts and kayaks in there as, as a kid, I'd walk down. I do also remember the easement that you speak of. And pictures that I, I tried to dig up, I'm sure that some of the people in the area have them, it did look a lot different down there. The house to the left by the flagpole was only built in 20-something. So, that, that driveway there sticking out was definitely not there as a child growing up. That's a definitely a new addition. Also, the shrubs on the right were never there 20 years ago, that whole, so when you just eliminate those two items alone, I went down and I pulled all the way down, kind of angling my Subaru out back towards this, the, the left side of this, where all this overgrowth is, and I could point turn there. And if the shrubs weren't there, I was able to even back up what would be town property. I could have backed up there and pulled forward again and then kind of turned. I did go over the end of this driveway, which is actually town property. The thing is, is that they're saying, we put up the sign because people complained down there that they didn't want their driveway blocked. But if their driveway didn't extend all the way down, we wouldn't be blocking it. So, it's kind of half dozen another. Maybe there's some type of agreement, we can talk to people and figure out a plan with the residents. I think that's the important thing, is to bring them around the table. I think as we allow, as you stated, there is encroachment all through the town, so what are we doing? I mean, one of the biggest problems we've seen in this town is that public access, coastal access keeps getting taken. Where people are saying it's changed over time. And this is definitely an example of how it starts. And if we don't actively take a stance on it, it then becomes like the issue in knowing that we still have yet to figure it out and work out in its entirety. There's land there. I mean, recently we found out that the green in Old Mystic is the town property. Residents were mowing that for many years. And we, some people didn't know, so we're constantly finding stuff out. My concern is, if we have major problems on narrow roads and there's encroachments, we have to have some form of enforcement when it's impeding on anybody's right to access an area. It's stated, it's never been stated to me, that some people don't want people down there. And if naturally you start taking your property line and encroaching, it looks like you can't get down there. So, I guess, how many feet, Greg, on either side do we own that we're not utilizing currently in this, this road?
Probably about seven to eight feet on each side of the pavement.
Okay, so when you take 14 feet and add that, that's significant. And then, and then to have that sign, which I don't think we should, it should come down immediately, in my opinion. Don't block the driveway, like, move your road and your driveways and your bushes over, so we can get down there. That used to be a fun place as a kid, I, I mean, I spent many times launching kayaks and rafts out there. And it, it should be a public place, and as years pass in the next hundred years, this is just going to keep encroaching, and then what? Well, then they'll say, well, we had the right-of-way long enough and it's our land now. Will that law come into effect, like what happened with Noank, where, you know, if you were using it long enough, it's yours?
That's not what came into play in Noank.
But it could, but people were saying that I've been using-
It's really hard to do against government, though.
Right, so could that happen on this?
I don't think that much, it's really hard to do it with government.
So, I guess my question is, why are we just, you know, visibly allowing people to extend driveways and shrubs beyond 14 feet of, of land?
Well, part of it is, like, it's been going on for, you know, probably hundreds, over 100 years on some of these spots. We don't have the staff, and most of these times you're going to get attorneys involved. Like, I guarantee you, some people on this road will have their attorneys involved, so it's going to be a process.
Right, I, I think we just need to act, and those shrubs came in, I remember at one of the other council meetings, you, someone said that, that those had just come in, I mean, that's a lot, 14 feet is a lot of access. And if we have the problem across town, maybe it's something we should be working on and looking at as, in its entirety.
Thank you, Council's time has expired, thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just sort of speaking to this from the conservation point of view, the work I do with the Grattan Open Space Association.
Just to kind of speak to this from the conservation point of view, the work I do with the Grattan Open Space Association, that we defend our borders every year. So, in January and February, we go through every single piece of property that we work on, and we do a border walk with, with surveys that are marked, and we find points, key points all around the entire property. So, we do that in the wintertime, walking through every single piece of property and looking to see if there's any kind of encroachment, trash has been put on, somebody moved a garage on, whatever it is, we kind of, and we defend it, so we have to defend our borders. And if you don't defend it, then you lose it. So, and that's, it's an ongoing thing that we do every single year. So, I just wonder if, in this case here, where some of this has gone on a long time, and some of these people are moving in, if maybe even just a, a simple letter every year acknowledging that there's an encroachment going on, so that at least they're noticed, I don't know what-
For every instance in the whole town, you could be talking thousands. I mean, there's just no way we could document it.
Kind of do it.
We really got, this is a narrow road, so it makes more sense. Lots of roads have plenty of room, we're just not worried about, you know, if-
Doing it in all these different places.
If it doesn't be viewed or anything. There's just, we'd have to add a lot of staff, yeah.
Is there anything you've done with the, just talking to these people, I mean, are they willing to-
We've had a lot of dialogue, though, they're not going to willingly.
They're not going to do it?
I'd be very surprised.
Do we, does the town have any kind of enforcement ability on something like this?
I mean, it's our property, so certainly, it's just going to be a process, it's the council wants to go that way.
So, you could, you could remove something because it's our property, but-
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do it without, you know, going, having our attorneys involved. And then one thing to mention is, let's say we widen it, you might want to think about making a parking on one side, or else you're going to trap each other in. Right now, you really only get parking on one side because you can't do more than that. But if you widen it, but don't have both sides, you're not gaining much of anything, you're not really going to be able to access, it's just going to be a mess.
Do you know if people are using this as a boat ramp and parking, you know, a pickup truck with a, with a boat trailer, that-
The only thing you could do is a kayak there.
Okay.
You know, you can't go down, and, you know, it was mentioned about the shrubbery there. There's a little, I don't know who else, there was a little bit of a drop-off, that was kind of to that marshy area. We're not allowed to cut below the drop-off, it's gotten more restrictive over the years. Deb Jones has talked to the state about it, so that's why that, we mow along the top part, we can't do the bottom. But you couldn't take a car down or anything else, a truck, trailer, anything. So, basically, you'd carry a kayak into that, but it's marshy, so I'm not sure how many people do that.
So, are we kind of stuck?
Well, I mean, you certainly could widen it and make it, you know, like I said, you might want to consider-
Just make it a new road, just make it a, a new, more efficient-
And we'd have to, of course, you know, if you're really going to do it, then you're going to have to allocate dollars to pave and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Council Bumgarner?
Yes. Thank you. As has been stated, I'm kind of nauseam this evening. Though I couldn't join the walk this weekend, I have four years ago visited Alice Foley, you know, Park Place, and I'm really getting a sense of place and getting to know the issues with respect to coastal public access there and, and just along the entire riverfront. Obviously, just a great sight, those who haven't been down there yet. I haven't personally taken a kayak, but it's, it's nice to take in and get really great vantage points of the seaport, as you can see in some of those photos. But, you know, I, I don't believe we should necessarily, I, I don't think widening the road will solve too many prob, or solve all of the problems that we're having. I think, you know, definitely, clearly, as, as Council Borla had stated, some of the shrubs that are kind of hugging close to the road, maybe if they're cut back and working with the existing property owners. But I think the most important thing is, you know, obviously, to continue protecting the coastal public access that we have there. I, I would caution against widening the road in large part because that will induce cars to travel faster. And it is a very much a residential road where, you know, you know, with families and kids maybe riding their bikes, and, and we don't want the, in my eye, what we need to be protecting is the, the public access itself, not, you know, the public access of motor vehicles, if that makes sense. You know, so certainly, you know, I would, I guess maybe my, my question to the council is, you know, what, in our eye, what, you know, what can we do to enhance and improve on coastal access if we were not to widen the road? You know, I, I understand some of the issues of backing up a car to get, say, a kayak into the road, but you don't want to do that at the expense of, you know, of the, the safety of the road, you know, of the neighborhood either. So, we're kind of in a rock and a hard place because that road is so narrow, obviously, but do you have like any salute, proposed solutions?
Well, in terms of speed is an issue, you know, maybe do gravel off the side, you know, just, so, it kind of looks like a road, but not, it's not something you're going to rush down. You know, and kind of makes it clear to people that they could turn around, you know, that they could-
And we can do that within our existing right-of-way? Outside of the road?
Well, you'd want to move the stuff out of the way, you know, you'd have to remove the encroachments. But Greg, is that possibility to, you know, could gravel just be done on each side if those encroachments were removed? Eventually, you know-
It could, but it becomes, it, excuse me, it becomes a little bit of a maintenance issue when you have gravel on a road like that. And, you know, really, you, you really couldn't widen the road enough to make it so that you could actually have parking on one side or the other and still have tube traffic, you know, two-way traffic. You just don't, the right-of-way just isn't wide enough. You know, I, I think the real issue is trying to get some turnaround of some sort at the end, and also, you kind of open up that access at the end of the road, you know, where it meets the river.
What was that again? What do you mean by that?
You know, just maybe, you know, moving those shrubs back that are at the end of the road. Just to, to open up the access at the river, and then maybe try to create some type of a wider road at the end, so it's a little bit easier for a car to turn around without, you know, using the private driveways.
Okay. And, and say, you know, if a res, I, I see there's a boulder placed on the, one of the driveways, the driveway to the right. And then, but the, I mean, these, those are all private right-of-ways, right? That's not, those right-of-ways are not in, you know, they're, they're not, those are their right-of-ways, not, not the town's, correct?
Yeah, I mean, those driveways, I mean, they come into the, to the road, but, you know, they're crossing, you know, the right-of-way. So, you know, there's five or six feet of their driveway is in the town's property, in the town's right-of-way.
Five or six feet?
Since ours goes out to, what, seven or eight feet on each side, so if theirs is only five feet off the road, then they're in our area.
So, so the stone pavers there, that, that's technically our right-of-way? Jesus.
Yeah, it's within our right-of-way, but, you know, they have to have access, obviously, to their driveway. Yeah.
So, wouldn't, wouldn't they even need a permit to, to do that, from, especially considering they're a part of the historic district? Because this is, can I, I remember, and, and not to interrupt Greg, but I, I saw even, what was it, a couple, when we had the public, public comment, there were some folks who came for that, spoke on that short-term rentals, and then they had said that they, they had torn up a, a road, and then the building, I believe the building inspector said, no, you can't do that. You're going to have to come to us and, and very likely have to restore what you had just, just built? Is that something here where maybe they should have also kind of gone before if they were trying to, they not only built a, a driveway, but then built it in our own right-of-way?
Council's time has expired. Question should be answered.
Yeah, I mean, the historic, the historic district doesn't govern the stuff in the right-of-way. They, they just do the buildings, but, you know, if somebody builds a new house, they would get a permit from, from us, from Public Works, to, you know, construct the driveway apron. These, you know, historically have probably been here for, you know, hundreds of years. So, it's just kind of grandfathered in, but, you know, everybody has a right to construct a driveway out to, you know, the paved portion of the road.
My feeling is, I think generally, people would like to get this opened up as much as we can. You know, how about if we have Greg do some more research, like an easement and some other things, look at some options, but then also run it by our attorney to see if, you know, if there's anything we need to do legally, and then we can report back.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your answers to you both.
Council Franco?
Thank you. So, I've been looking on the town's website, on their GIS system there, and there are portions of this road that are basically almost as wide as the road, as where the lines are on, for property rights. If we went back as, and actually paved as far as we were allowed to, you're, one of the houses, it looks like you're literally going to be almost right up to their front door. Because maybe historically, you were allowed to build a house closer to the property line, I'm not exactly sure. I think no matter what you do, you're going to have problems with the turnaround at the end, because there's no circular area down there. And as Mr. Hanover said, I put in a driveway and you are allowed to go down that far, you're, I mean, you can't take up a sidewalk, you know, without permission, you can't, there's certain things that the towns already have in there, but you can go up to it. And maybe, if I'm looking at this, it looks like that house, I don't know, it could be, it, it looks like there, there was probably a paved driveway at some point, and they put in the cobblestone driveway. And actually, where those bushes were, it, there used to be a tree there. So, maybe they took the tree out and they decided to put bushes in there, and I don't know exactly what happened there. But I'm not seeing historically that there was ever any kind of turnaround there. And our GIS system actually has pictures going back to 1934. And I, and I can't see anything in there that would show me that there was a turnaround of any sort. And a lot of those houses were all still there. It looks like the same layout kind of thing with those houses. And as what was stated, I notice on here it says things about mailboxes. Well, I have a mailbox in front of my house that's probably on the town's right-of-way as well. I think most, everybody does, if the mailman comes down your street and puts it in there, it's, that's the town's right-of-way. And I'm guilty of planting flowers around it.
Shame.
And plants. I am just as guilty of planting things to make my community look nice, I think, you know? And it's sort of picked up, and other neighbors are doing the same on my street, so I can't-
You'll be receiving a letter next week.
So, I can't really say, I, I think it's a horrible thing to put some, some plantings there. I don't think, my perspective, I think it adds to the charm of that area, some of the plantings, but I don't think it obstructs anybody's access to it. There is a, there's a bench there, and there's a sign there, and I don't care what you do to the road, you're not getting a lot of traffic down there. People, I just don't know how, we've had the discussion before, how would you be able to go down there, park your car, and take your canoe and go canoeing? There's really nowhere to park. The road's narrow. It's like, historically, it's just always been narrow, and not much room for parking. So, I, I don't know exactly, I mean, it's being brought to us, but I don't know exactly what, what's being asked of us as a council, and that's my question. What, what is being asked of us as a council for this? What would, what kind of solution is being looked at for us to potentially vote on?
Right, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager, you were looking sort of for direction on next steps?
Well, it was a referral from the, from Counselor Westervelt, so that's why it's before us, just to get direction on what does the council want to do, if anything?
Would you agree with that, Council Westervelt? Would you agree with that, Counsel Westervelt?
Well, if you're, pardon me, if you're going to park down there, if you want to take a kayak down there and you want to go parking, you're going to end up parking either in the roadway, which is going to end up blocking, but if there is that other seven feet on the other side of the road, now your car can be off of, you're still not going to get three cars side by side in there. It's, and it's not feasible in this area. But having people being able to park on the side of the road without blocking traffic, then that's the, I guess that would be the end game.
Okay.
I would, I would just like to say, when I look at the GIS system, to me personally, I just don't see that as a big solution. I don't know how, even if you had two cars trying to park down there to take kayaks out, I don't know where they would park. I mean, because you can't block people's driveways. I mean, you're not supposed to block anybody's driving, no matter where you live, if it's a narrow road or not, you can't block somebody's driveway. I mean, and I've driven down that road. I've, I, this is something that we've heard about over the years and I've gone down that road numerous times. And I don't see, like the bushes at the end taking them out, how that's going to fix or change anything, my personal opinion. Because I don't know if you're, are you looking to put a parking at the very end or on the side? Because the house that's, it seems like the house right here by, I don't know if it's on page, where the heck is it? I'm sorry, if we could turn, like, maybe it's page sixty? The house that's right, there's one right by, there's the two that are right at the end and on the left side, the one down, I think it's a number, I don't even, I can't even see what that number is, seven, nine, maybe?
Nine, yes.
If you look at where the line is the town, it's literally right up against the building almost. So I can't see where people are going to be able to park. I don't see seven feet there. I just don't. I see, from my own perspective on some of this, maybe towards the end by the, by the water on people's driveway area there might be. But on some of these other areas, I'm literally only seeing, to me, what looks like maybe a foot or two.
Thank you. Counselor's time has expired. Counsel Kassirin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we want to protect coastal access, but I think we are trying to look at this as if this is a, a single issue and we have to remember that when we're approaching this, that we are then going to set precedent. So if we go in and we request that we are going to remove bushes and take over the driveways of people, yes, it may be our right of way. As Counsel Franco just admitted, she is guilty of this also. But then we are going to potentially have to go into everyone's driveways and bushes and fences and mailboxes and take their right of ways. So personally, in my opinion, I think we need to be very cautious about this and how we approach it. I understand the concern. I understand the need to want to protect the coastal access, which appears to still be accessible to people. We're just looking at parking issues at this point. But we need to remember that when we make decisions like this, it could potentially be a ripple effect. And we have to be very cautious. I want way more information before I make any call on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelone?
Yeah, thank you. So fourteen feet is a lot. So I was just, as I'm sitting here, I remember the bench not being there or the sign, the bushes to the right not being there. The house on the left was built, I don't know, Greg, if you have that in front of you, that, that's not a house from 1800. That house was built in twenty-something, correct?
I don't know that.
It's the last one on the left? The very last one on the left, right before you go to the launch?
Number eleven.
Eleven?
Yeah, I don't have the date when that was built.
I thought I had, I didn't, I forgot to bring it with me, but that, I'm almost positive that house is not. Do you have it in front of you, Counsel Franco? I'd be willing to ask you if you have it in front of you.
It is, I can see on the GIS that there is property there and that one's really sort of foggy, but it looks like there's, the house is something, something's there.
Yeah, it was, it's new, it's newer construction.
Which number, it's number eight, is that what you're saying?
So the house is probably replaced there.
Yeah, so.
Well, number eleven is definitely there. I can see it.
Yeah, and encroached over more after the reconstruction. So my concern is, what we used to do is pull in, the shrubs weren't there, there was a tree, but it wasn't encroaching on the full part. You'd come in, the bench wasn't there, you angled to the left towards the flagpole, okay? And then you could do a full turn. And then we'd back in and you could put in a dinghy boat. You could do your double kayak launch off of a, off of a, you know, trailer, you, or whatever you had. It didn't have to be, it could be canoes, it could be rowboats, but you could swing in there. And what we would do is you went with two people and one would jump off, and we're both, and we would pull there temporarily, not blocking any driveways, and we would unload our, our water vessel of sorts, whatever it was going to be for the night or day, and then the person with the car would move it and park in public, parking on Pearl Street. And the person then would wait with the boat for the other person to come. That's what I remember and you were able to do that. And you were able to do a nice, quick little turn there. Fourteen feet did allow for you to kind of swiftly move in there. So my question, the bench wasn't there and neither was the sign. I feel like the sign should be moved off to the side and the bench is also impeding on the ability to launch properly there. I went down there.
Down there anyways, though.
You can back down.
People love that bench. I mean, all kinds of-
No, the bench is great, but I'm just speaking to how it was done before, okay? So the town's made it even harder to access the launch, okay? It's a great idea in theory, but it does impede on the launch with the bushes and the impediment of the other driveway. So I guess it's half dozen another. I can agree. We need to have something in writing where then maybe the bushes come back, the bench gets moved over and the other people with the driveway there that's on our land, instead of them having them dig it up, we compromise and say, "Do you mind if people swing over that to turn around?" If they're okay with it, then keep the pavers there. But if they're, my understanding from people I've talked to that they're being told, "We don't want you down here. You're blocking. They don't want them, you know? I don't want people looking at me when I'm in my lawn." If that's the feel, then we're going to have to be more aggressive. But if they're willing to compromise and allow people to do a quick turn there, but I, I think that the sign and the bench impede to properly launch. You're able to kind of take a car and swing in and you are able to launch, take your kayak off the top of the roof, because now they have the nice roof racks, and launch your kayaks there and have someone stay with them while you move the car to, you know, parking where it is allowed. So the bench stuck right in the middle of a boat launch with a sign stuck in front of it is also impeding. So I feel we're also impeding. The bench is a great idea, move it to the side or the, one or the other. But there is some things that we can do and I think it's a collaboration with the residents down there. People have a right to be down there and it can be used for a dinghy with a small motor. It can be with a kayak, a canoe. I've seen multiple things. It's been used over many years, many, many years. The town adding those two pieces and then saying, "Don't block my driveway," it doesn't look very welcoming.
Thank you. Counselor's time has expired.
So I think those should be moved over, Mayor.
Just looking at, it looks like we put it over quite a bit right. I think we're having in there, we tried to find the way to have the least impeding of anything and again, you know, it's, you can't, you know, you're not going to really pull up, pull up there. But I did find the year of the house, by the way. It was built in 1999. It looks like it may have resold in twenty, maybe.
My point exactly, that impediment on that side was not there when I was growing up in high school. It was much broader and that driveway was back further. The driveway met the side, met the road at a wider distance, so there was more room to turn.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of questions to the, to Town Manager. Can you just talk a little bit about if we did get aggressive and we sort of went down there and lawyers got involved? Is this the kind of thing, like, do they have a leg to stand on or do we ultimately win because it is our, it is the town property?
I think ultimately, we could clear anything, you know, obviously, you can't, you know, they'd have to volunteer to let them pull up, you know, anyone to turn around on their drives or anything like that. It's all supposed to be what you'd want to do. I think, I'm not sure we're going to get much further tonight. I really do recommend, let us do a little more research and come back.
The other, so I guess I'm just, my question's kind of along the lines of Counsel Kassirin's is, you know, what is it, what kind of stones is this unturned, over, you know, overturned if we sort of go down, you know, litigation route?
That's what I want to talk to our attorneys about.
And then have, if, say, let's just say, looking at house number nine, which has a fair amount of lawn on it and I went, I went down there a couple of days ago and looked at it, you can, you know, you can easily park a car, but it looks like you're parking on their lawn, but in reality, it's-
Our right of way.
It's our right of way. Do we get a lot of complaints if people do that? I mean, do the, do these people, do the residents of this area complain if people actually access that town property?
I, we haven't received any complaints and I, I've been down there at least a hundred times and I see people parking on the grass all, you know, all the time. Because otherwise, you're like basically blocking the road.
In the road. So, so as long as we can have access to that, that, those spaces, we can, we can go and park there. And so maybe if some of the houses, like the house that's across the street from that, number eight, has a tree, has a light pole, has bushes, you know, those kind of things probably should be moved back into their own property and then at some point, but more research is needed, so.
And then going back to legal, of course, an attorney might have a totally different opinion. My biggest concern would be if, do they have, if they have a case is, I could show you, you know, one hundred more places that have the exact same thing, you're not enforcing it there, you know, so I could see that being the biggest issue.
Does the town run into some kind of problem if they're sort of enforcing it in one area but not enforcing it?
That's, that's the main thing I want to talk to the attorneys about.
That's what you want to talk about, okay. That's, that's probably the key question in this whole thing is, you know, can we do something sort of spot here and there or are we sort of stuck that we have to do a town-wide thing? So, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands. Andrew Ver, basically, you're going to just do some more research and come back?
Yeah, we'll gather more research and talk to the attorneys and come back as quick as we can.
A point of information. Is there a date that we can go down and we can meet Greg and actually see exactly where the property lines would be so we can actually pace it out?
Greg, once we have our research done, could we put some stakes in a little section just to, you know, visibly see?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So as we get, let's finish up the research and we'll actually stake it.
Perfect.
Not the whole road, but, you know, a section so you have a good idea. Focus down at the end of the road.
Point of information. What are you exactly researching and for what?
One thing I want to look at, look for that easement. I want to talk to the attorneys and to see, you know, legal research and to look for that easement and then-
On property eight?
Yeah, and then kick around any other ideas after this discussion that Greg may have, so, as an engineer, so.
Okay.
All right.
The attorney might say it's going to be a huge legal issue, don't even touch it.
And I have another point of clarification to you.
But I don't know what we're touching.
Yeah.
Touching what? Like the bushes?
Yeah, if we enforce, if we enforce-
People's mailboxes?
In one area, not the other, you know.
I mean, are you, because, I like, even mailboxes, they're supposed to be planted a certain, like, there's, like, right there by the road and so far back from the road. I mean, are you supposed to put them back in their yard, seven, like?
Well, let's say we had our road paved, you know, the full way, you would have maybe seven feet back, you know, from where they're at. I'm not saying we should do that, but wherever the road is, just right now, it looks like that's where the road is, so that's where the mailboxes are. So if you had the road wider, they'd move the mailbox. Not, I'm not saying we should or could, but that's what you do.
Will you come and take my, my right of way and widen my road?
Well, yours, yes.
My, my other point when you're researching, if I may, is that, you know, the people who live there now, if they said yes, that's not going to stand because in twenty years, we don't want the next council, if they sell the house, to have to do this again. So we have to make a decision and I think that this section is unique because it's impeding public access. So it's different than like your neighborhood by your mailbox, right?
But it's been like this since nineteen thirty-four on the GIS system.
Right, but the house from nineteen ninety-nine came out even further.
It was built in ninety-nine or?
The house was built in ninety-nine, but I don't know if the driveway, what happened to the driveway?
Oh, they came way out after, so.
Oh, because there's a house there before that.
All right.
Oh, yeah, there was houses before, it just, it got replaced. One got turned down and built.
Yeah, it got replaced, yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Kassirin, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We are adjourned at eleven sixteen.